Information on how to watch, attend, and participate, as well as agendas, minutes, and recordings can be found on Broomfield's website at www.broomfield.org/councilmeetings. The public may also participate in public comment, either in person or by calling 855-695-3744 and pressing *3 to be placed in the queue for comment. Screeners will ask callers for their first and last name, neighborhood, and the agenda item the caller would like to comment on. If you would like to speak on more than one item on tonight's agenda, you will need to press *3 each time to be placed back in the queue for comment. Public comment will be limited to 90 minutes total per item. The first 1 through 15 participants in the queue will have 3 minutes to speak. The next 16 to 25 participants in the queue will have 2 minutes to speak. And if time remains, the next 26-plus participants in the queue will have 1 minute to speak. For our Heart of Hearing residents present, we have wireless headsets available through our AV team in the back of the council chambers. The city council meeting is called to order. No council members are absent. Mayor Castriata and councilmembers Lim, Ward, and Marsh Holson are attending remotely from the National League of Cities Congressional Cities Conference in Washington, DC. Councilmember Leslie is attending remotely as well. Per the council rules, when the mayor is remote, the mayor pro tem presides over the meeting. A quorum of the council is present. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In an effort to keep order for tonight's meeting, I ask councilmembers to limit their comments to 5 minutes. If councilmembers are given an opportunity to speak for a second time on an item, they should limit the comments communication to 2 minutes. We will plan on a 10-minute break at approximately 8:00 PM. We will begin with council's review and approval of this evening's agenda. Council may add or remove items from consent agenda, or council may revise the order of business for the meeting. Does any member of the council have any comments or questions regarding this evening's agenda? Seeing none, are there any objections to this agenda being approved? And seeing none, this agenda is approved. Before we jump into tonight's agenda, we have a special guest joining us this evening. Please join me in welcoming Broomfield's own Gabby Gonzalez from Friends of Broomfield. And Gabby, you can go just right over to the podium. As we will proclaim later in this evening's agenda, Broomfield recognizes March 2025 as People with Intellectual and Development Disabilities Awareness Month. The state of Colorado will be recognizing those with intellectual and developmental disabilities at the Capitol Building on March 19th for the Alliance IDD Awareness Day. We are so proud to announce that Gabby has been selected as a finalist for Advocate of the Year by the Alliance. She will represent not only people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, but she is also representing the Broomfield community. We are so grateful for your work, Gabby, that you do to advocate for our community and the IDD community. Gabby, would you please come to the podium? Thank you, and introduce yourself and say a few words.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, and staff. I am grateful for you recognizing me for the work I've done and for the people in my community. And I'm grateful for the work we do together to create an inclusive community. Thank you.
Thank you. It's always a great meeting when Gabby gets us started. So, thank you. We will now move to public comments, starting with in-person. If there is anyone who would like to be heard, please come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. Please limit your comments to 3 minutes.
Hello. Kathy Knight, Northmore Estates. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council and staff. Thank you for your kind, strong, intelligent leadership. Oh, I'm nervous. Thank you for detailing your flag policy on January 28th at the city council meeting, which includes flying the inclusivity flag during Pride Month. I'm left-handed. I write left-handed, I eat left-handed. I was born this way. I'm so grateful to live in a time where I can live my best life despite being different from the majority of folks. No one accuses me of witchcraft because I'm left-handed the way they did in the past. No one ties my left hand behind my back, forcing me to act right-handed the way they used to. Gender queer people have always existed. Gender queer people will always exist, regardless of what some guy with a Sharpie says or does, or what some extremist in Texas writes and tries to write into law. I'm excited for the time where gender queer people can live their best lives in peace the way I can as a left-hander. Thank you for leading our city and county, the country, the world, to include everybody.
Hi, I'm Sandy Anderson from the Broadlands. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, and city leadership staff. I'd like to thank you for all that you do as it is well beyond what is understood, acknowledged, and you all deserve our respect and our support. I'm also grateful for your governance without hate and chaos during this slash-and-burn environment. Let me remind you and our Broomfield neighbors that you were voted in. You won your elections, and you are who we chose to represent us. You have our trust, you have our support, and you have our vote. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, and staff. My name is Janet Sun from Ward 5. There was a person that was supposed to have been here tonight. I don't see her. So, I will speak on her behalf. She wanted to talk about the pride flag, and she was concerned that it was being flown on Midway. She was against it. We think that there are better, better people to, not better people, better issues to celebrate that engage all people, not single out individuals. We're all Broomfield residents. We need to stand up for things that we can honor, things that have meaning to the greater public, not, and show support for the residents, not for individual cults.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else. Next is public comment from individuals joining via phone. Do we have anybody? We don't have anybody online. So, let's see. Sorry, I skipped to general public comment. So, we're going to go back to... Gabby? I'm sorry, I missed our opportunity. Is Gabby still here? Perfect. Gabby, I missed our opportunity to take a picture with us at the dice. Would you please come forward so we can get a picture? Thank you. All right, now we're back on track. Thank you, Gabby. Next, under petitions and communications this evening, we'd like to honor another special guest this evening. Please join me in welcoming Laura Lai-Fronfelder, the first-ever Holy Family School swimmer to bring home a state championship title at the state meet. Now, here's the really cool thing. She won both the 50 and 100 freestyle events. Laura Lai is accompanied here tonight by Holy Family's Art Athletic Director, Ben Peterson, and varsity swim coach Hillary Zerlango, did I pronounce that correctly? On behalf of myself, Mayor Castriata, and the Broomfield City Council, I'd like to congratulate Laura Lai on this awesome achievement. Would you please introduce yourselves? And if you have any comments to share, we would love to hear them.
I'm Coach Zerlango, and I've had the pleasure of coaching Laura Lai for her first 3 years at Holy Family. I want to take a second really quick just to thank Holy Family Athletics for allowing me to coach there, for Laura Lai's family for trusting her to be a part of our team, and the city and county for recognizing her, taking a minute to recognize her. Laura Lai is way more than a great athlete, but it's nice to take a minute and recognize her achievements in swimming. I also do want to take a minute and thank the staff, and especially Dawn at the Broomfield Community Center, who is so supportive of us during our swim team, and we couldn't certainly do it without her as well and her staff. So, thank you very much.
I'm Laura Lai. I just want to say thank you so much for having me here, and it is an honor to be Holy Family's first state champion.
Thank you. Well, because we take public comment for everything that we do on the agenda, we will now move to public comments, starting with in-person. If there's anyone who would like to be heard for this agenda item, please come forward. Seeing no one. Next is public comment from the phone. Anybody? Nobody. So, questions and comments from council are next. Are there any questions or comments? Comments, yes. Councilmember Henkel.
I got super teary. I just want everyone to know in this room that Laura Lai is such a great teammate. My daughter has been swimming with her. You probably can't hear the next words out of my mouth because I just get really emotional. I do this for a lot of our athletes, but you are very special, Laura Lai. And he has been friends with you, and she has entrusted in you a deep friendship of being a teammate and an advocate for the sport as well. You have shown her you're older than her. You know, she looks up to you so much because you're also taller. I just want everyone in this room to know just what a leader Laura Lai is, not only in the water, but out of the water. When you see her on deck, she is high-fiving other kids, not only on her own team, but from other teams too. And so, that's something that I just, I really admire about you. Thank you.
If I may add to that really quick. Swimming is an individual team sport, which is a really hard thing to, A, coach, and B, be an athlete in. And very rarely do you get an athlete who is an amazing individual, but is also an amazing team participant and team player. And Laura Lai definitely is both of those.
Well, thank you so much for being here tonight. And again, congratulations. We are all so impressed by what you have accomplished and grateful for, grateful that we get to share in your excitement and pride that you have brought our community. So, thank you. And please come join us for a picture at the dice. All right. Next, under petitions and communications this evening is a proclamation declaring March 2025 as Intellectual and Development Disabilities Awareness Month in Broomfield. Will the representatives here to accept the proclamation, please come and meet Councilmember Anderson at the podium and introduce yourselves. Thank you for joining us this evening. I will summarize the proclamation, and then I will turn it over to the representatives for comments. The city and county of Broomfield is committed to celebrating, promoting, and protecting the rights of individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, supporting their full inclusion in the community. People with IDD have inherent value, strengths, and abilities, and deserve dignity, respect, and equality under the law. Collaboration, education, employment, and community-based services are essential for fostering self-determined lives and meaningful contributions. Increasing awareness requires openness to learning and addressing systemic barriers to equity. Individuals with IDD have the right to advocate for themselves, make person-centered decisions, and receive the support needed for independence. Broomfield proudly upholds the civil, legal, and human rights of its community members with IDD. Therefore, I hereby declare and proclaim March 2025 as Intellectual and Development Disabilities Awareness Month in Broomfield. Would the representatives like to make any comments? And please introduce yourself.
Hi. I came to say thank you, and then I ended up writing a page. My name's Elsa Wannecott, and I'm the Executive Director of the Association for Community Living. We're also known as the ARC, serving Boulder and Broomfield counties. So, we are the proud recipients of the funding that comes from the wonderful ARC thrift store, and we're part of a nationwide network. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and for your deep commitment here in Broomfield to people with intellectual developmental disabilities. We use the acronym IDD, and this gets really long if I don't use that acronym. ACL is a human and civil rights organization for people with IDD. We've provided advocacy since 1962, a time when many people with IDD lived in institutions. You know, our first work was to change this, and we worked with people themselves and their families and some of the community partners. We're not that old, but some of those people or their grandparents are in the room today. It was providers. It was large agencies like the former Imagine, now A&amp;I Avenues. So, what was not built back in the day, in the '60s, when we really looked at home and community-based services, is we didn't build actual homes. Not the kind of homes that people with intellectual developmental disabilities, because that's a very diverse group of people. Not the homes that they and their families needed. And we also didn't do the work to build out what's the really crucial part of this whole blend of, you have a home, you have embedded services and supports that help someone live there, and then you have this welcoming community that surrounds that. So, Broomfield has literally led the way in creating actual homes. The openness of the community to be welcoming is so clear. We've had agencies of all kinds step forward saying, how can we include people with IDD more? How can we make sure that they have a home, that they have healthcare, that they have mental health support and an education? So, this community is absolutely ripe for the third ring of what everybody needs because it does take a village, which is that welcoming community. So, one of the projects that we're beginning to launch is exactly that. And across the world, there are movements, and they might be autism-friendly cities, they might be IDD-friendly cities, or they could be a neurodiverse-friendly city. And Broomfield is perfectly positioned to become the first neurodiverse-friendly city and county, entire county, in fact, in the state of Colorado. There are models that we can follow. You have got the heart, you've got the will, and you clearly have built out the infrastructure. So, I think there's a lot of experts in the room who can partner with you. But thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for everything that we're going to do. I think diversity and inclusion continue to be important, and the greatest symbols of that are what we build for everybody. And so, I think you've got such a great start. You're an inspiration, but more than that, you're hope. These are very difficult times for people who rely on Medicaid, and to know that they've got your support is just enormous. So, thank you from everybody at the ACL, which is our typical short name for the ARC-serving Boulder and Broomfield community. And I want to hand over to, I don't know if the other mic works, to one of my fellow advocates.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Councilmembers and staff. My name is Rebecca Tolliver, and I live in the First Filing District. I'm here to thank you for the proclamation. And I'm also, not only as an individual with an IDD, but I'm also here to represent SABE, which is Self Advocates Becoming Empowered. We are a group of people with different IDDs that come together, and we change the systemic demographics of the cities we serve, not only at city level, but at national level as well. I'm really grateful for being able to know that the city and county of Broomfield can listen to its people and hear what we need. If we ask for something, we know we can come to you as a member with IDD and at least be heard. And this also started very, very good with Cottonwood. I'm really excited to see that happen, and I'm excited to see the success of it. And I'm just grateful for having a city that can be all-inclusive and accessible. And I'm grateful for the fact that I get to work alongside all these wonderful people in the ACL and SABE. Thank you.
... of the ACL's Housing Inclusive Network. Many, many, many hands have touched this document. It takes a village to create a document. It takes a village to care for our kids. I'm the parent of a 22-year-old who's on a spectrum, who needs a lot of help. And I am from Boulder, but I am so proud of Broomfield and can't wait to move here because you guys are leading the way. You are. I've been involved in trying to create housing and opportunities for this such forgotten part of the community. We are where seniors were back in the '70s. You never spoke about seniors. Now, you speak about them for everything. Where are they going to live? Who's going to help them? Well, it's time to do that for the IDD community because their needs are the same as those of seniors at the age of 18. Who's going to take care of my kid? Who's going to feed her? Who's going to fill out all the goddamn paperwork? You know, let's be real. This is complicated, and it takes a village. It takes everyone here to help our kids get through life and be as independent and as successful as possible. And I thank you so much for, A, adopting this. Our goal is to spread it across the counties in Colorado. It's part of a sales goal. And our goal is to continue to make Cottonwoods replicatable and out in every town because with 2,000, for Boulder and Broomfield County, there's 2,000 individuals that live with parents my age. I'm actually older than the 60. 2,000. Where are they going? So, you're making a small dent. You are moving in the right direction. And thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you. We will now move to public comments for this agenda item, starting with in-person. If there's anybody that would like to speak, please state your name and your neighborhood for the record, and please limit your comments to 3 minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, staff. My name is Gina Cofield. I'm a 33-year resident of Broomfield. I agree with everything that has been said by my friends here. But I do want to give you examples of why we need to be so deeply gracious, gratitude-filled because of the work that you've done over the last 30 years. I'm a parent of a 40-year-old adult with IDD. He still lives with me. But back when I was working in the schools, I knew we needed more in this community. Back in 1998, we started, and the city and county supported us when we started Special Olympics. They supported us when we started recreational or therapeutic recreation. You listened to us, and not just this council, but obviously councils for decades now have listened to us when we needed one community center board and one place for our families to go to get information and services. You made that happen. And when we started our organization, Friends of Broomfield, you were there to support us and have been all 20 years that we've been running this agency and providing services. As a parent, as a caregiver, as a resident, longtime resident, as a provider, as an educator in the schools, I am deeply impacted by all of the actions that have been taken by all of you who have been on these councils through the years. I thank you for this proclamation. I thank you, Elsa and Karen, for submitting this and for you honoring it. You are making waves in the world. And Broomfield, I am proud to say, is celebrating diversity. We should celebrate diversity. We should say it loud and proud. We should put it out there for everyone to see because that's who we are, and that's what we're becoming. And it's a good thing, and it makes us better neighbors, better friends, and better human beings. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other public comments in person, we'll go to individual... Oh, oh.
I'm sorry.
Apologize.
No, you're fine.
Go for it.
Thank you. My name is Angie Roman Steiger, Ward 1. Hello. James, hi. I have an adult song with special needs, and we are Broomfield residents. I want to thank the mayor and councilmembers for recognizing this precious population in our community, along with family, caregivers, and acquaintances. We appreciate this recognition because it shows their value and contributions to this growing community, whether in the workplace, shopping in Broomfield, volunteering, one of our best volunteers right here, and yes, and even voting. We have voters. I have two requests from you. First, that you share this proclamation on your social websites, please, for the families who could not make it here or for families who are just starting this journey. Second, take a moment and check out ACL. ACL, Association for Community Living website. This program has served many families, including ours, and will always, always, ACL will always have this family's appreciation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no other in-person public comments, we'll go to the online, and nobody online. Next are comments and questions from council. Are there any comments or questions from council on this agenda item? Seeing none. Well, thank you for joining us. Oh, I do have one. We have councilmember Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I'll be very brief. I just want to say thank you so much for being here. And obviously, it means a lot to us as well hearing all of y'all speak. You know, I speak on behalf of myself, but you know, this is a community that does need attention and does need a spotlight on. And I'm happy to be able to support y'all in this one, while the mic seems small, I think it's a significant step with normalizing folks with ID, and to make sure that folks with ID are recognized. And ideally, you know, we continue to keep making sure that Broomfield is a welcome community. And I appreciate a lot of the comments. They're very moving, and I thank you so much for doing that. Thank you.
Looking to see if anybody online wants to talk. Doesn't look like anybody is. Well, thank you so much for being here. You know, I remember there was this meeting, I think it was around the time that I first got on council, and there was a meeting that happened at a church here in Broomfield. There was panelists of many of you that are in the room and talking about this very important topic of IDD and housing and the need for this. So, thank you so much for bringing the awareness then. Thank you for your continued advocacy for bringing awareness of the inclusion of people with developmental disabilities in all facets of life, whether it's housing, whether it's jobs, whether it's just a place in our community, and also bringing awareness to those barriers that people with disabilities may face. So, thank you all for being here tonight. It's an honor, it's a privilege to be signing this proclamation, one out of maybe all of them. So, I really do appreciate it, and it's an honor of mine. So I really do appreciate it and it's an honor of mine. So thank you for being here. All right. The final item on our petitions and communications this evening is an update from the Broomfield Police Department. Chief Hempelman, will you please come to the podium and share your presentation?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, virtually there, Mayor Pro Tem and members of City Council. I'm Anaya Hempelman, your Chief of Police. Tonight I will be providing some year-end crime stats and comparisons as well as some of our goals from 2020 that we're going to be implementing in 2025. And a little change tonight, I'm going to include my deputy chiefs, who are going to be present over there back there. We actually have quite a few of our command staff back there. And they're going to be highlighting some of the things that are occurring in their bureaus. Next slide, please. Okay, we're going to dive right into property crimes. Just a quick reminder, this information is also available on CBI or Colorado Bureau of Investigations website. In the top graph, we're comparing yearly property crime stats for '22, '23, and '24. We see that larceny, burglary, and motor vehicle theft all trended down in 2024. Robbery remained consistent with a total of 16 for the entire year. And overall, I'm happy to report that property crime in 2024 decreased about 17% compared to the previous year. The bottom chart shows property crime rates per 1,000 residents. It's the exact same information, just in a different way to look at it. Larceny may seem high at 15 per 1,000. However, just a little reminder, that includes all simple thefts and shoplifts. An interesting thing when I was digging through the numbers on this is one of the things that really drove this number up is the amount of times that our bait bike has been stolen. It was stolen 102 times last year, believe it or not. So that really increased our number. But I'm happy to report that we got our bike back every time. That's important. 99% of the time, we also apprehended one of the suspects involved. So this is really good because a lot of times these leave our city. And because of the GPS, we're able to get our bicycle back and apprehend the suspect. Next slide, please. So I'm hoping next year, I don't have to report one solo slide just on motor vehicle theft because of the decreases. But I wanted to at least provide a summary this time. So we pulled some stats from what we call Colorado Metropolitan Auto Theft Task Force. So what we call that is CMAT. And they produce an annual report. And so I grabbed their annual report and I saw that in 2020 to 2024 comparison for the metro area, which is Adams, Rappahoe, Broomfield, Denver, Douglas, and Jefferson Counties, they reported a 15% decrease in motor vehicle theft over that time period for that major part of the state. So when we look at this, when I talk about the counties, that includes all of those municipalities within. That's a really pretty remarkable number and really good to hear overall, even for the whole state. But this graph really is showing Broomfield, specific to Broomfield motor vehicle thefts. We're showing a decreased trend for the last three years. Highlighting this is that in 2024, we had 198 vehicles stolen versus the 2023 where we had 282 vehicles stolen. And that's a 30% decrease between those two years. So previously, if you recall, the number one stolen vehicle were the trailers. So we took a lot of very proactive measures to be, from looking at cameras. I talk a lot about our special enforcement team, what we call our SET team, which is a small group of individuals that really focus on the crime patterns. So we look at the SET team, the data-driven policing model that we use, the crime analysis that we use, we took all those and we really focused on where should we hit so that we could prevent this crime. And I believe, I have to believe that those proactives really made a difference. One of the interesting things that we did is we received two Live View Technology camera trailers. And we really focused those on specific construction areas or where the thefts were occurring and proactively targeted those areas. And we're no longer seeing that as one of our number one stolen vehicles in Broomfield. All right, next slide, please. Diving right into violent crimes. So the top graph shows a 6.8% decrease in total violent crimes, dropping from 146 incidents in 2023 to 136 in 2024. So that's a positive thing for us to see that decrease. The number of murder remains unchanged, maintaining the low figure of just one incident in 2023 and one in 2024. The aggravated assaults show marginal rise, increasing from 84 incidents to 87 incidents in 2024, so 84 in 2023. When digging into these crime stats, which make it interesting is how we do neighbors reporting to the state. When we look at the increase in the specific agressals, we saw that when we had our critical incident at Arista in September, that counts by victims. So we had 10 additional victims on that one incident. And that's truly why we see this decrease in these numbers. Non-consensual sex offenses have also decreased 21% between '24 and '23. And the numbers on those that we had, 48 in 2024 versus 61 in 2023. Looking at the bottom chart again, same exact information just shown by rate per 1,000 residents. I think the biggest takeaway here is that less than two people per 1,000 are victims of violent crimes in all three years, specific to us in Broomfield. Okay, I'm going to pivot a little bit to my deputy chiefs. I believe DC Clement, are you up first? All right.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. I am Deputy Chief Mike Clement. I am over the Field Operations Bureau for the Police Department. And that area of control I have on that is the Patrol Division, Traffic School Resource Officers, and then two ancillary units, which are our Code Compliance and Animal Services. So I would like to introduce to you the Field Operations 25 goals in our first slide. And I've put those into two different areas, which are really our core competency and functions of what we focus on every year. First one being crime reduction and the second one being community safety. So I'd like to start with the crime reduction side of the slide. And in '25, we're going to continue, as the chief spoke to, of the successes we've had with our intelligence-led policing. We're using multi-discipline groups that get together and they share that intelligence. And then they're building their responses from that. And those teams are made up of our Patrol Division, our detectives, our crime analysts and data, as well as the SET team that the chief just spoke on. The second area there is the utilization of technology. Our drone program has really taken off. Sorry for the pun, it's really taken off. And we used 291 deployments last year. And those we use for finding suspects, to missing persons, to some of our traffic accident investigations. And then the second one there is the FLOC license plate reading program, which you're familiar with as I think some of our private businesses have come to you in regards to request for licensing. And the information that that shares across the region has been invaluable. So the second side there is community safety. We're going to be doing the 25 Traffic Campaign that based on it becoming a recent focus interest for you folks. I'll speak to you in more detail on the next slide. Also from that, we'll have our Targeted Public Safety and Service Announcements, which we do as an educational component. And then interesting for us in this upcoming year in 19, sorry, 2025, is about 58% of our division in patrol are officers that have less than three years' experience because of the hiring. And then we've been very fortunate to add additional supervision at the first line level there, which are also new to their jobs. So one of the things that we'll be doing in '25 is getting everyone comfortable and continuing to do the training and education to get them up to understanding our community and department values along with their job. The final step there is continuing our partnership with community providers in our areas in regards to our non-traditional services, which is Chart and B Corp and some of those that you might be familiar with there. So next slide, please. To explain this slide a little bit, what we've given you there is the fatal accidents by year for over the last four years, as well as the serious bodily injury accidents. And then on the other side is the 25 police initiatives that we'll be focusing on. So while a tragedy to the families, one of the things I'd like to point out is in '24, we only had four fatal accidents for the city. We did give you four years of collection primarily so that we could get enough information to give you some of the causation kind of components around that. So out of those, the causation part, about 44% of our fatal accidents over the last four years have had drug or alcohol involvement. About 50% of our fatalities are occurring right now on state highways and interstates. And then kind of an interesting kind of side fact that came out of our fatalities is about 25% of our fatalities were motorcycles. So going back to our serious bodily injuries, same thing. About 0.4% of our total accidents were actually serious bodily injuries, so extremely low. The causation that came out of that kind of held the same in regards to about 50% of them were alcohol and drug-related. And about 45% of those are again on the state and interstate roadways. So that's the general information around that. I'll finish up by touching on the police initiatives that we're kind of very excited about. So the first one you see there is alcohol and drug-related enforcement. We'll continue to target that. We have about 150 arrests a year. We're currently still working under a grant that helps offset our officer time when we do that focused enforcement around it. And then we'll continue to do our public education. We'll target the schools around prom and homecoming. And then we're always there at Broomfield Days and events like that. The distracted driving efforts on the second piece, again, we'll be looking at public service announcements. And then we'll also be doing social media push on kind of some of the new things that we're seeing that are related to distracted, like as you're all aware, I'm sure, of the hands-free phone statutes that have come into place. And also we'll have some stuff on like moving over on emergency vehicles. So we'll be doing that throughout the year. The final one there is our focused enforcement. And I know the chief has been here before and talked to you about how people can make a complaint, traffic complaint in regards to concerns and things we're seeing. Still can do that online, still can do that through the traffic site, still can have a traffic officer call you back in regards to that complaint. We take that data, that information, and then we also take kind of what we're seeing, regional and local. And then really, we're then setting our resources around that. So really, it's kind of come down to a bang for the buck kind of a response with the traffic resources that we have. So with that, I will pass this over to Deputy Chief Goodell.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. I am Mark Goodell, the Deputy Chief of the Special Operations Bureau, which includes Investigations, Communications, Civil, CSI, Crime Analysis, Victim Services, Records, Property and Evidence, and Court Security. On top of the two I'm going to talk about tonight, which is B Corp, our co-responder program and our wellness program. Our co-responder program is a secondary response model, meaning that clinicians will respond to the scene and that's been made safe by an officer. As you may recall, we approached City Council last year about bringing this program in-house and we were able to accomplish this in July of 2024. The graph on the screen here is a percentage of calls handled in real time over the last three years. Calls for service average about 500 a year. But in the last three years, we have seen an increase in calls handled in real time through August through December of 2024, which is the green line there. So we think this program has proven to be a success for bringing it in-house. So thank you for that. Our clinicians continue to build relationships with hospitals like Centennial Peaks and West Pines, which just opened a facility at 120th and Huron recently, and other healthcare agencies. This gives us the opportunity to bring someone to the hospital where previously, they wouldn't have taken them. I know that's shocking, but that's the truth. They wouldn't have taken them. B Corp has worked with many other resources for a more comprehensive approach and to provide individuals with more resources. Clinicians provide ongoing follow-up support, ensuring that individuals who accept B Corp's resources and assistance receive continuous guidance and remain engaged, we remain engaged for as long as it requires support. B Corp consistently does community outreach events. Most recently, they did Coffee with a Clinician, which provided information directly to the community about what B Corp is and does and how to connect with clinicians. Additional B Corp initiatives included a three-and-a-half-minute video for social media and Channel 8. I encourage you to go to our website and watch it for additional information on what B Corp does. B Corp will be presenting at our BPD Inside Academy this spring. Additionally, in 2025, B Corp will expand their mental health services to focus on the senior community. Next slide, please. Now I'm going to talk about our wellness program. In 2024, we placed a strong emphasis on overall wellness encompassing mental, physical, and financial health. The chief's philosophy is that if our officers are well, it extends directly to the community. In 2024, the PD launched its very first wellness program with efforts from the Wellness Coordinator. Some 2024 program highlights include developing policies, which assist officers in getting resources related to mental, physical, and financial health, developing a reintegration plan for officers returning from leave after a critical incident. We have also partnered with our HR department, local peer support teams, and external wellness providers on a variety of other topics. We also have instituted a Wellness Ambassador Team, just created to help coordinate Family Night, wellness presentations, and trainings for employees and their families. Family members of PD employees help cook dinner for those who had to work on Thanksgiving and Christmas. And then in 2025, the program aims to expand resources, develop a family academy, enhance financial and physical education, and continue to reducing the stigma around mental health support. The photo that's up here, the one to the left, is our Be Well Room, which is at headquarters. We have a similar room unlike that at Detention, which is available to all PD employees. And the photos on the right are from our July barbecue that we had last summer, which is a well-attended event for employees and their families. And several vendors were on-site to provide information related to financial and physical wellbeing. And up next is Deputy Chief Plunkett.
Evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. I'm Roger Plunkett, Deputy Chief of Support Services Division. I oversee the Detention Division, recruiting and hiring, training, professional standards, and the SWAT team. I'll start out with providing some information about the Detention Center. We recently enhanced our medical care for inmates by updating our biometric sensor capabilities. We use Bluetooth mesh technology and we added a monitor, a cell phone, and an iPad to enhance our detection and mitigate our liability. These sensors monitor the heart rate, pulse oxygen, and stress levels of inmates to assist our staff with staying ahead of potential medical emergencies. This is critical for our jail so that if an inmate has a medical emergency, the system will notify our staff and officers, letting them know that they need assistance. We also provide more mental health and medical care for the inmates, which has resulted in fewer off-site emergency medical visits and overall hospitalizations. Recently, additional lighting and cameras were put up in the overhead of our Sallyport to provide better observations for searching processes as the intake of arrestees. This eliminates opportunity for inmates to introduce contraband into our facility and overall weapons in our facility as well for overall safety. We are also participating in a tablet pilot program that's unique to this industry that interfaces inmate calls to tablets in our housing areas. This provides inmates with an opportunity to communicate in a personal setting, privacy of their own area while speaking to their loved ones. These calls are still monitored by our officers if necessary. We continue to provide the Medical Assisted Treatment Program and we also expanded that program. We provide all medication options, discharge planning, reentry services when they leave our facility, hoping to reduce recidivism. As a result of our strong MAP program, the facility is proud to report that our staff has not had to use lifesaving Narcan in over a year. Now moving on to recruitment. Recruiting police officers continues to be very competitive and challenging due to the amount of time it takes to hire people and get them on to their own from training. Our focus in 2024 was to recruit and backfill the addition of new positions and promotions. Our recruiting team attended over 20 recruiting events, including the state of Colorado and Wyoming. We also created a nine-person recruitment team. It was formed with all four of the different divisions within PD. And we have representatives from the recruitment team now attending job fairs, sitting on interview panels and applicants, and have contributed new and innovative ideas for recruiting and retention. Training. We facilitate a lot of training. Our training unit has coordinated a total of 353 classes in 2024. 185 of those classes were critical skills such as de-escalation, anti-bias, procedural justice, use of force, driving, and other active violence response training. We also have facilitated 168 other classes, which were around leader skills, leadership skills, or specific specialized disciplines throughout our organization. Policy development. Besides training, there are a number of policy developments done as legal mandates and updates are needed. The Police Department must adapt to the changing tactics, the procedures, and best practices as they develop. Switching gears a little to the SWAT team, I wanted to provide a little information about the 2024 calls that we receive. The nature of our call-outs are due to armed or violent felony suspects. The number of Broomfield SWAT team deployments are fluctuating throughout the years. Historically, the SWAT team snipers have deployed to assist with providing security overview. Historically, the SWAT team snipers have deployed to assist with providing security overview for events and activities. We now recognize that our SWAT team not only deploys when there's an armed subject or violent felony suspects, but rather proactively for crowd control, security oversight and emergency responses. You often see them at many of our special events. Over the last couple of years, the SWAT team has doubled on their callouts specifically in 2022. We had seven, 23, 14 and 24, 16. This is due to a number of factors, specifically more advanced tactics outside the patrol officer's training and capabilities and utilizing technology and special equipment to provide the highest probability to resolve the critical incident peacefully. Thank you. Back over to the chief.
So as you can see, a lot going on in our police department, which is really why I wanted to bring my DCs in. I'm going to go to the next slide. Okay, so just to wrap up here, a couple of our focus areas in 2025, of course, not inclusive to everything because there's so many things that are going, that are going on continually in our police department. But here's a high level overview. Prepariness relating to safety at community events, the visibility, public safety focus on crowd management and keeping the community safe at large events. This is our focus this year. Of course, advancing the new PD building, which I know is on the agenda for further discussion. Hiring and recruiting, focus on hiring the new 2025 positions that have already been approved. And then try to really get creative and innovative on ways to recruit our officer positions. Wellness will continue our wellness program. As you heard of all the successes from DC Goodell, we'll continue to build on that because that really is my philosophy that if officers are doing well, that will translate into our community and vice versa, right? If they're not doing well, that also would translate into our community. So that has to be our focus as well. Review and update policies, continue with the process is always reviewing, refining policy, industry standards and legislative mandates. Community engagement events, we had over 215 events in 2024. Events like National Night Out, the Chief Senior Walk, Huron Hero, Special Olympics Torch Run, the Inside Academy, Coffee with a Clinician, Coffee with a Cop, all those events. We'll continue those and then we always add new ones because our officers and our employees come up with some great ideas. And we love to be in the community, not just from an enforcement standpoint, but really to just be seen as regular people. And lastly, really the reason that we exist, crime reduction and community safety. Intelligence-led policing, we talk a lot about that. That really is our focus when we utilize our crime analyst, our set team, our task force participation, the community education and events, social media education, all those will continue in 2025, especially as we pull those trends that, that we can pull the data from 2024, lessons learned and apply those to 2025. Next slide, please. That concludes our presentation.
All righty. Well, thank you. We will now proceed with public comments for this agenda item, starting with in person. If there was anyone who would like to be heard, please come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Mayor Pro Tem, may I?
Of course.
Jennifer Hoffman.
You got three minutes.
I wanted to take just a, just a moment. When we started doing these, these quarterly updates, Chief Hempelmann and her team do, they really are the silent heroes in Broomfield. They don't do jazz hands. Chief Hempelmann sends me daily updates of overnight what occurs for our swing shift and our evening shifts and anything big that happens during the day consistently. Those help me understand what's happening and the severity of the calls that we are continuing to see. Broomfield is a really remarkable community and what we see during the day is a reflection of how well we do in the evenings. And some of these calls that we are getting and have, quite frankly, post-COVID, make us realize the gratitude that we should have for our first responders and our PD in particular. Those three gentlemen that I'm looking at standing, I don't have my glasses on. All 30-plus year veterans in our police department. It's another one of the challenges as we move forward when we are looking at critical functions for our budget. We have, much like in our public works, the crew that has kept Broomfield safe for over four decades are nearing what we talked about in back of freedom. Right, wrong or indifferent. One of the pieces that why Chief Hempelmann places such value and discussions on wellness is the percentage of our officers within the first year of retirement, after they have served our community and other communities, the death rate is mind boggling. Preparing for what that looks like before they leave and after they leave. We've been very fortunate that when we do provide new positions, 26, I think in the last three years, Chief Hempelmann.
Yeah.
We have been fortunate to promote from within. And while that is a really remarkable thing, when you are getting a bunch of newbies that are in, it presents additional challenges when you have so many new ones on the street. So a personal thank you. It's one of the, one of the most important departments, certainly that a city manager oversees and one that I am filled with gratitude every day, not only as a city manager, but as a resident. Roger, you're 40 years. Yes.
And DC Clement.
Clement's 40 years. Goodell, I know you're 30 plus, brother. Total. Chief Hempelmann, that makes you and I feel like babies only being here for 25 years. So that makes me feel rather good as I'm grateful to all of you.
Art Bell, thank you.
All right, back to in-person comments on this specific agenda item. If you would like to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name, neighborhood, and you have three minutes.
I'm Bill Cruthers, Northmore. I don't have much of a voice tonight. I'm sorry. A few weeks ago, the Broomfield Police Department was able to stop a car, found drugs, weapons, all kinds of stuff. I was the one who posted on Nextdoor for people to, you know, to congratulate the police for that stop and ended up getting over 70 likes on that. I was hoping to get at least 20 and ended up with 70. So great job on that. And we just had one the other day. Unfortunately, I think Westminster got the credit for the one on I-25 and 120th. Another fantastic stop for you guys. And it's just amazing, some of the things that happen, just pulling the car over, you know, pulling him over for running the stop sign or whatever turns into such an incredible bust for these guys. I appreciate it and I hope it continues. Thank you.
Anyone else in person for this agenda item? Seeing none, we will turn to online and no one's online. So next is comments and questions from council. Are there any council members that would like to? Agenda item, Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you for your presentation. We always love hearing all the updates. I like to brag about our rates, right? I think that it's also a testament to as to what's really going on in the situation. Anytime I was taught military wives, you're kind of taught in these situations to slow things down, really assess and address the situation. And we're just so proud of our safety. That's really the crux of any community. You talk to any commissioner, you talk to any city council member across the United States, safety has to be paramount. And so I just really appreciate that, that work. I love the community response that you all have for people, you know, who might be having, you know, some sort of either mental health, mental breakdown. And I, and I think if you guys have, I've heard through the community that you treat people with respect. And that's like number one priority is treating people with respect, no matter what kind of crisis they're going through. And so I just really want to appreciate the B Corp program that we've had. I know that I had asked some questions about the B Corp program. And it sounds like there's different models out there according to, you know, what sort of, you know, city and county that you're in. Would you guys explain the model that you guys use and maybe compare it to another different model in a different county? I know Douglas does something different even than Denver. Do you want to explain the different models?
Sure. Well, so we call our model secondary response. So that means that an officer responds to the crisis and once the scene is safe, then we page out our B Corp or mental health responders. They have a radio, they hear, they hear the calls a lot of times. Sometimes they're on a ride along with the officer, so they're already on the call. So that's truly our model. I can't speak on others except for maybe Denver that has its own model of how they respond specific to the call type. Sometimes they get there sooner, but from our standpoint, we want to make sure that before we put any worker or so, you know, person who doesn't have a badge and a gun in a situation where someone's suicidal or homicidal in that situation, that we make sure the scene is safe. So that's working really well for us. And right now, again, we're very superstitious, but everyone has maintained safe, right? So that's our model. When we say secondary response, that's what we mean by that.
Okay, thank you. And it sounds like when you guys are responding, it's not monitored in the same way that you guys track your response times with PD at first. But you guys do follow up. Would you explain how you guys follow up with people? That are in those crises and because sometimes they're not, the hours aren't, what are your hours again? Sometimes things happen outside of those hours.
Sure. So we really try to focus on having our workers there, the bulk times of the responses. So we look at the statistics to show this is the, the times that they're most needed. After midnight, we don't have anyone on, but there's follow-up that's conducted. I have to also say that our officers are all trained in C and T and that's specific, I'm sorry, CIT, Crisis Intervention Technique. So it's kind of in the olden days before we had B Corp. So we have that, but what we do is provide them all of the same resources. We print out the report. We then have our B Corp responders in the morning follow up with individuals. Obviously, if it was an emergency situation where they had to be put on a mental health hold immediately, the officers still do that. But the follow-up that's conducted afterwards is that information that's shared and then, and then they follow up the next morning.
Okay, thank you very much. And my last kudos to, I've done ride-alongs and I want to encourage anyone in City Council to do ride-alongs as well. Anyone, I think in the community can do that as long as your background checked and you have to do all those sorts of things. But to make sure you guys are great too. But I also want to give kudos to the PD too, because when we go on ride-alongs, I noticed that they carry food with them. Would you explain why they would carry food with them?
Well, it depends, right? It depends on if it's their own lunch or if they're sharing with, with who they're responding to. We've had officers out of their own kindness, see someone on a cold night, try to provide them resources and they don't want it. So they either go get them food or give them their own food or whatever is provided. So we have a lot of wonderful employees that work at our police department that have that compassion.
Yeah, I noticed on the ride along. Thank you all.
Yes.
All right, now all the way from Washington DC, Councilmember Lim.
Thank you. Ward three residents have been increasingly reporting street racing incidents, especially on Cole Street and Sixth Avenue at lunchtime in conjunction with the high school lunch period. So we have been telling them to report that as a traffic incident. Could you basically describe your enforcement mechanisms when there are a number of reports of street racing? And how do you anticipate, and this is obviously not summer peak time yet for street racing? How do you anticipate enforcement during increasing incidents during the summer? Thank you.
You're welcome. So a couple of things that we do, first of all, we're part of the Denver Metro Regional Street Racers Group. So what that means is that this group gets together. It's everyone from State Patrol, Westminster, Lafayette, every agency in the metro area, all the way from Aurora or even further south. And we really try to be proactive. For example, when we get together and it's usually quarterly that we, we set up these, we'll call them stings for a better word, and try to be proactive as to where the street racer is going to be that weekend. We've had anything from most recently when we did it last time, about 250 contacts. And I actually had a number here. I didn't know if this question would get brought up, but I actually wrote this down. We had about 270 summonses and about 200 contacts as well on top of that. So the dynamics of this is a lot of times, council member, when, when we hear that this is happening on Sixth Avenue during school time, a lot of time that's not the street racers. Those are kids goofing around. We get the call sometimes on Commons Park or 136 or wherever, wherever you may live. You know, at midnight I hear street racers. That's just a few kids or adults sometimes who get together and are just being, I'll say dumb, right? Racing is not wise, right? Lack of a better word. So when, when we look at those and when we respond, by the time we get there, they're not there. So what we do with the street racers, the Denver Regional Group, is that we try to grab the intel to say, where are they going to be this weekend? And then we proactively try to target that, whether it's to, one of the things that we want to do is we want them, prevent them from being here. And my priority is Broomfield. So if we know they're going to be at FSU near the mall because there's a huge parking area and they're all going to get ready to go on 36, then we'll show up there. So the proactive measures are that. It's really difficult when we show up and there's 100 cars and there's three officers who are responding to that. So then you try to proactively just get the ones that you can get and that kind of sends the message. It'll continue this summer, so we'll continue with the regional approach because that's the best approach. But again, a lot of times it really is that the, just one or two or three individuals who are goofing around late hours and whatnot. And we always say, call us. Even if we get there five, 10 minutes after the fact, a lot of times they'll come back to those areas and then they'll see us and then they'll leave. And we also do unmarked cars and marked cars because someone did ask me that question. We recognize the problem and we'll continue to be proactive with it.
Hey, thank you very much.
All right, Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Just to echo Councilmember Henkel and Manager Hoffman, it's, we're fortunate that when the police comes to report to us, it's a feel-good moment usually.
Usually.
We're lucky to live in a community with such low crime and I think still the lowest crime per capita in the front range. But I did want to ask a couple of quick questions. When the DA has been here, DA Mason, and when the council met with Judge Bachman recently, one common theme through that was the DA is very concerned about the alcohol and access to guns among our youth that is particularly having house parties and people getting killed, gunfire in Adams County, but also Judge Bachman talked and maybe Kelly can correct me if I get it wrong. But I think she said something like 70% of the cases that come to or are related to addiction or some sort of abuse, substance abuse. So I'm just curious in terms of what you're seeing in terms of youth in this community. Are there efforts maybe you're already doing or things we need to focus on? But the issues they've raised in terms of fentanyl, the presence of it, is it on our streets? What should we be concerned about?
Sure. Well, when we look at youth, there's a number of factors involved. So a lot of times they're not being contacted by the police until after the fact. I was thinking when you were asking this question, Commander Witchlass, are you back there? So we have some programs that I know he leads and I'd love for, do you mind coming down here? Alive, Alive at 25 and some other proactive measures, specifically the one that I was thinking of that I can speak on is the one that we actually, we, we got together with Judge Bachman and we created a program for teens and when they're involved in an accident or summons us. So would you?
Good evening. Thanks, Chief, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Like the chief said, we have multiple programs. And really the school resource officers, our goal is to connect them to resources. Because typically when we get involved, we're already at the enforcement level. And so now we need to connect them to resources. We do that within all the school districts that we service, so BVSD, Adams 12. And then also I know we connect with B Corp. B Corp has been huge for us to be able to get them into the schools when things are happening. Then the program the chief talked about is the Alive at 25. So that's the driving program that we do. And then recently the courts started a Broomfield Teen Opportunity Program. And their court navigator, she asked the police department to be a part of that. And so now we work with youth that actually have been cited and it's working on getting them jobs. We connected with the Workforce Center. So lots of different programs that we do because enforcement is only one small piece of it. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I will note Judge Bachman was highly complimentary of the cooperation with the police, particularly in the youth programs and the ones you're involved, the 2025 Alive or whatever it was called.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to note, when we have such low crime rates, smaller things bubble up. So one thing I hear constantly, but if you could just briefly address, I hear about all the time is expired tags. When you have a date on the back of your car, I guess you get noticed and people know when they're out of date. Is there a particular enforcement program or what can we tell people about?
Yeah.
How we respond to that?
Well, you can tell them is that is our number one summons. It's interesting that you say that. That is the number one reason that we ticket. And Commander Witchlass, who's also part of the Traffic NSROs, he actually shared that with me a couple of months ago when it was brought up here. I believe someone had asked me that question and then randomly I got a bunch of questions about that. So our focus has to be the, the crime prevention. But if an officer sees that, obviously they're writing the tickets because it is the number one. writing the tickets because it is the number one summons.
So if you have an expired temporary tag, you're going to get summoned in Broomfield.
In Broomfield, you're likely to get summoned, yes.
It's good to know. We can tell our neighbors that, please. Well, when they're two years old, you nearly notice and you obviously wonder if that car is stolen or what, how that case. One last thing real quick, and I really wanted just to, I would appreciate having your patrol folks here, but I, something came to my attention. I was asking or harassing, depending on your point of view, or street people about, I get complaints about southbound Zuni at 136 because there's a turn right on green arrow. You can't turn right on red there. So it really slows you down and some people really get irritated by that. But I learned in that process, I think it's Bryce Hamilton told me that the city repainted the, restripped that street and has seen a 25% reduction in crashes at that intersection in the last three years, which I think helps particularly, it's amazing statistic to build just a little bit of paint, little thought process into that, reducing that number of crashes of that intersection really helps keep the community safer too. So just a thank you to the street department, probably involved you guys as well. But that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Winn.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you Chief and Deputy Chiefs for an incredible presentation. I appreciate the information and the presentation just making me feel safe that our community continues to see growth and also crimes rates going down. My question for y'all is, you know, with crime rates going down and with the new police building up, it's being developed and hopefully be, you know, being built next year. How should Broomfielders feel about the new building? How will this, you know, support our continued growth and our continued, hopefully crime rates continue going down?
Yeah, that's a great question and I know we'll be talking more about that in, as an action item, but you know, we look at, I, I look at 1.7 ratio. So what that means is 1.7 officers per 1,000 residents. So when we did our study to say, how big should the police department be? We took the population and did that 1.7 ratio. But what comes with that is that we are completely out of space and I, and I will get into it more later if, if you don't mind, unless you want me to expand now. But really from a safety standpoint, we, we are out of room. So as we increase police officers, that means an increase in detention officers, which means an increase in our, in our support staff, dispatchers, all the things that come within that, additional detectives. And, and my hopes is as we add that staff, that we can continue those lowered crime rates. But without a police department, I just, I don't know where to put, I don't know where to put the folks. So I'll be very honest, it's, it's really hard right now. We have parking issues, we have space issues with lockers and everything else and, and I can expand more on that. But our goal is crime prevention. That's, I always say, that's why we exist as a police force. But at the same time, it's, it's difficult to do that when we hire and add positions and we're very fortunate that we get a lot of the positions that we need. And then I just don't have a place for them. And that's why a lot of our staff, B Corp is currently in this building. We have staff everywhere. My special enforcement team should really be right there with investigations team and they're not. So those little things really matter. Our sergeants are separated and they matter to the community because that's how we will prevent the crimes from occurring from that collaboration that comes within the organization.
Thank you, Chief. And yes, we'll, we'll save the rest of the conversation for about the new building. I know that it's very exciting and obviously, quite frankly, I agree with you. You know, Broomfield as a community is outgrown by large margins and I appreciate you going depth in the ratio because our community still is growing. I mean, we're almost 80,000 residents and so it makes sense that there will be some issues and we're fortunate to have this growth and this sense of security. So I appreciate, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And from Washington DC, Mayor Castriata.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you so much Chief and to your team for this very informative and enlightening report. Whenever I leave, I, I can't wait to come back to Broomfield and tonight has definitely made me miss home even more. The one thing that I've heard about recently up by Highway seven and the King Supers, is there's some type of car club that's gathering on Saturday nights around midnight? Is it the same group that maybe migrated away from, you know, the 36 small area? Or is this a new, a new phenomenon that you guys have heard about?
Well, if it's in the King Supers mayor, that's going to have to be eerie.
Eerie.
Call, so, but I can tell, you know, these are usually the same groups. They go from location to location and that's why what's really critical for us is that, what I call intel, the intelligence of getting the information to say, are they now going to leave that parking lot and start going south into our city? So they, they could be mayor, it's just that the intel that we get may or may not, just depends on who they are. If they're just a bunch of kids who are hanging out, who are still, you know, doing the speed racing, that's still a problem. So whether it's that group or the bigger group, we're still going to be proactive about our enforcement.
Well, just want to extend my gratitude again. Thank you all so much.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I, any other council members comments, questions on this agenda item? See, no, no, I, I do have a couple of questions, just to clarify from your presentation. One of those was Councilmember Lim brought this up about the street racers. This is a comment, as our weather has gotten warmer, we've seen this activity pick up just a little bit. Of course, you know, dry roads and nice weather, a little bit more light in the evenings. We're seeing more street racing happen on US 36 as well as 287. I've pointed people to the, the website as well as the non-emergency line. Is that the best place for them to report any of those concerns or what they're seeing?
Yes, and if they're being real reckless and it's a danger to the community because of their speeds, I would be comfortable with you calling 911. I think it's one thing if they're just gathering, yes, call the non-emergency number if they're parked and it's in the mall and they're just, you know what they're about to do or you suspect that they're going to be speed racing. But otherwise, call 911 if they're being reckless.
Okay, and then if, I mean, would the same be true, you know, hearing this activity at night, you know, up on, like, Lakemora, up near the water tanks, you're hearing this activity pretty regularly in the evenings? Again, best place to do that, you know, you're not seeing it firsthand, but you're hearing it, best place, non-emergency line.
Non-emergency line, yes.
Okay. What information is helpful to provide in those instances, whether that's the non-emergency line or the, the website? What, what information is helpful?
Well, the, the most, yeah, the most difficult thing is if you're in bed sleeping and it wakes you up, right? Summers come and the windows are open and you hear it. You could say, I think they're going east or what direction they're going, but there's not much to that. And that's why it's so hard to say, are they the big group of speed racers or just kids who are goofing around? And again, when I say kids, there's some adults that are, are doing this as well. So I, I think it's just a matter, if you're not comfortable and you want us to look into it, call us. But there's not that you can provide, not a lot that you can provide, you know, whatever time of day, if you say it's 136 in Sheridan and they're going really fast. Because by the time we get to wherever at, unless we get lucky and the officer is right there when it happens, they're probably going to, if they keep going east, it's going to be in Westminster's jurisdiction. And we do bolo that information to Westminster or whoever else, wherever they're going, just to air that in case they get that information as well. That's probably the hardest part about the speed racing issue, is by the time we get to that location, they're gone. And that's why the intel and the proactive nature is so important.
Yeah, thank you for that. You talked about motor vehicle theft prevention and wanting to get this number down to zero, which I think is a, is a great goal. What can be done? What can the citizens, residents of Broomfield do to help get that number down to zero on the motor vehicle thefts?
Be the eyes and ears, call us. When you see something suspicious, if it doesn't seem right, doesn't feel right, if someone doesn't belong in your neighborhood, you see a car that doesn't have any plates or expired plates, all those things will give us a reason to contact someone. The biggest thing is with legislation, we need to be very intentional about why we are contacting individuals. So you calling us and your suspicion makes it more likely that we're able to contact them instead of an officer saying something that might just be a little suspicious. With the eyes and ears of the community, they can say, this car doesn't belong here, it's brought, you know, it's in front of my house, been here for two hours. Whatever the reason is, your articulation will give us reason to contact the individuals and call. You never bother us. We're here 24 hours a day.
Okay, all right. And you, you had talked about the fatal accidents, 44% being drug, alcohol involved, 50% state highway, interstates. Are those, those statistics, are those similar to the other jurisdictions within the metro area and maybe even along the Front Range?
You know, I didn't look at other jurisdictions because we only had four fatals and I say only, but you know, any amount of fatals is tragic, tragic to our community. And I, I can tell you for us, the enforcement piece has to be the DUI enforcement and we have a leaf grant, it's called a leaf grant. And that allows us to, to work extra enforcement on a grant and be more proactive. So I can only speak on what's going on in Broomfield, even though it's the four, but knowing that that was a percent for alcohol or, and or drugs, that's, that's our focus.
All right. And then the last question I had was regarding the SWAT call numbers. You had talked about that, that those were, there were a certain amount of responses or for the SWAT calls and those have increased year over year. Are those just responses within Broomfield or are those responses within the surrounding jurisdictions as well?
It's all responses for our SWAT team. So sometimes they're assisting another jurisdiction, so that would include that number as well.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Any other council members, questions, comments? All right, well, thank you so much for your update this evening. And all those people in the blue seats, if you just turn around, you'll see all of our officers and our police department staff in the back. Please show them your gratitude. Uh, thank you for that. We now move on toward to council member reports. Does any member of the council have any reports or updates this evening? Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, Mayor Protem. I'm going to open up my thing here. I just, I had the opportunity to attend the National Association of Counties in Washington DC a little over a week ago with the bipartisan efforts as the Broomfield Council Delegate to Colorado Counties Incorporated this past week. On the roles represented was Broomfield Council Delegate on Colorado Counties Inc., Vice Chair, Front Range District CCI, CSBG on the Tripartite Board, which is the federal block grant funding, NACO Vice Chair of the Immigration Reform Task Force and Emeritus Chair of the Metro Area County Commissioners. So many constituents have approached me with anxiety over federal actions and our 64 counties are also concerned. I joined Republicans and Democrats from CCI in meeting with our federal electeds like Representative Pedersen's and Evans offices in prioritizing our families' workforce and transportation needs. We are asking them to guarantee direct and consistent funding for our county administered programs such as SNAP, TANF and County Administered CCAP for Childcare Assistance Program. We are also asking them to develop a bipartisan solution that guarantees direct and consistent funding for locally owned roads and bridges and specifically for surface maintenance. Right now, counties are experiencing a gap in basic funding for road services in both rural and urban corridors. For Broomfield specifically, we advocated for critical federal funding to support programs in which residents depend on. CCOB recognizes that the administration may want to move in a different direction in future funding, but we urge support in preserving current dollars. Preserving the funding already allocated and continuing the funding for the bipartisan infrastructure law is critical for CCOB to maintain essential services for communities such as Medicaid, the Child Welfare Block Grant and federal funding for safety improvement plans, multimodal enhancements or development and infrastructure. Lastly, tariffs will continue to increase costs for housing and cars and more. There's others in my ward who have been also concerned about the NOAA jobs or who have lost jobs at USAID and we hear you. We also hear our immigrant community who has families stuck in a P1, P2 refugee program in another country that's been shut down and they need the refugee program to reunite your families. We also just heard from the federal government that they have plans to remove Ukrainians from the temporary protected status list in April, which means over 240,000 Ukrainians could be forced once again out of their US homes and deported. I serve as Vice Chair in the Immigration Reform Task Force and support the efforts this group has made in policy resolutions that provide equitable acts for immigrants. I attended trainings that discuss affordable housing and the effect of tariffs on the wood we receive from Canada and gypsum for drywall we receive from Mexico. I also listened to experts describing the paper ceiling and what we're doing for those who may not have a bachelor's degree for a position, but have the skills to support the work required in those roles. I listened to commissioners all across the US discuss FEMA and the NACO's Intergovernmental Disaster Reform Task Force meeting, expressing to White House staff that they do not want FEMA to dissolve and they need a seat at the FEMA Review Council table. I attended sessions describing the financial loss of immigrants who contribute so much to our affordable housing and childcare crisis. In another training, I was able to experience GIS and AI that is used to create and test multiple development scenarios within cities and counties. I proudly served in a bipartisan effort for Colorado, Broomfield and my ward specifically. In a chaotic environment, I am proud to serve steadfastly in the values that Broomfield holds dear. And I just wanted to let everyone know that I do have a very, very detailed list and note taking link that I sent to staff and other community members such as the Broomfield Housing Alliance and others. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any other council members have any reports this evening? Well, I, looking at mine, no hands raised. I do have a couple. So the one book, one Broomfield Junior Program just occurred recently. We had a great author, Dan Satat. He presented a graphic novel titled First Time for Everything. This was a program that was geared towards middle schoolers. We had a lot of middle schoolers show up, which was pretty awesome. They asked some of the most fantastic questions that night. So hopefully you can check out one of his books. This is just one of his great books that he's illustrated as well as written, so look for those. And the other thing I wanted to announce was the, the mayor gave a phenomenal State of the City recently. If you missed that, it is recorded and you can check that out on YouTube. So again, thank you, Mayor, for all of the information that you presented. Seeing no other council member reports, we will now go back to general public comment. I inadvertently started that earlier and wanted to give a chance for anybody that didn't have the opportunity to present general public comment. So this is an opportunity for public to comment on matters other than the agenda items listed elsewhere on tonight's agenda. If there is anyone who would like to be heard, please come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Excellent. Just wanted to provide another opportunity for anybody that didn't get to do that. Next is public comment from individuals joining by phone. We don't have anybody. So next, under reports, staff is going to provide council with a legislative update. Oh, sorry, council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize. I apologize.
We're riding with you.
It's, it's the, it's the page break.
We got you. Danae Brilard is going to halfway through the session. We all say that no one is safe while the legislature is in session and this year is no different. Ms. Brilard.
Protem and council members, and a late evening hello to the mayor and council members joining from DC. I'm Danae Brilard, Director of Strategic Initiatives and Governmental Affairs. And this evening, we have prepared a brief legislative update. Next slide. Tonight's staff presentation will include a general update on the legislative session, current and upcoming conversations with the Joint Budget Committee and the state's budget, statuses of bills that council has taken positions on, and then I'll close with a request for council's consideration of a formal position on Senate Bill 25161 Transit Reform. Next slide. As Manager Hoffman just mentioned, today is day 63, meaning we are over halfway through the 120 day session and 498 bills have been introduced so far. We're starting to see a slowdown of the bills with larger fiscal notes moving through the process as several of them are parked in appropriations and they will likely stay there until the state budget, also known as the long bill, is introduced. Over the past several months, we have shared that the state is facing an unprecedented 1.2 billion-ish budget deficit. And over the next month, we will start to see the impacts of the deficit on budget decisions as well as future legislative decisions. The Joint Budget Committee is currently behind schedule with figure setting for several large departments, which are still happening this week. That includes our Health and Human Services and our K-12 education systems. Figure setting is the process where the JBC reviews the department requests and then starts to determine what they will include in the next year's budget. On March 17th, the Office of State Planning and Budget, OSPB, and the Legislative Council will release their Quarter One 2025 Budget Forecast. The JBC will use one of these forecasts to develop the revenue amount for the state's budget, which will run July 2025 to June 2026. Subsequent to the forecast, the deadline to introduce the long bill is March 24th, with April 11th being the deadline for final passage. We'll continue to monitor and provide updates as needed. Next slide. I did want to take a brief moment and remind council that the most up to date information I did want to take a brief moment and remind council that the most up-to-date information will be the Broomfield Bill Tracker, which has been shared in the memo with both council and our residents. In partnership with Bodich and council, we'll continue to update the Bill Tracker throughout the session. It is important to note that it is, again, limited to the bills that impact CCOB directly. Pending the magnitude of impact, we may bring forward bills for council's consideration of a formal position as part of the presentation, which you will see tonight, and as I mentioned earlier. Additionally, council members may bring forward formal position requests as well, using the process outlined in council's rules and procedures. Next slide. Right, so today, council has taken formal position on five bills, which you can see on the screen right now. Just going to give a brief update of where they are in the process and some new information that we have related to our efforts. So the first one is Senate Bill 30, which is Increase Transportation and Mode Choice Reduced Emissions. As you recall, council is in an amend position, and the bill is currently scheduled for the Senate Transportation and Energy Committee tomorrow. We have been successful working with council membership organizations and Dr. Cog in getting amendments and anticipate a strike below will actually be introduced tomorrow. The strike below that has been shared does still require local governments to work with CDOT to identify multimodal transit gaps on the state network, as well as submit local multimodal projects that Broomfield currently has underway. Our transportation staff is already tracking that and would be able to use existing lists. The strike below also changes the bill from a mandate to permissive for local governments, which is what we are advocating for, to adopt mode choice targets and prioritize projects based on mode choice shift potential. When council took the amend position, there was sentiment shared that a support position in the future may be desired. So we'll monitor the committee hearing tomorrow, and pending if the strike below is adopted, we'll come back to council with an update. The next bill is 1056, which is Local Government Permitting Wireless Telecommunications Facilities. Council is in an opposed position, and the bill is scheduled for tomorrow in the Senate Local Government and Housing Committee. Thank you to Mayor Protem Chef, who has volunteered to testify on behalf of council's opposed position. House Bill 1169, Housing Developments on Faith and Education Land. You also have heard it called Yigby. Often, council is in an opposed unless amended position, and we are happy to report that we have been successful in getting some amendments into the bill, although fundamentally, the concern around local control does remain. Some of the amendments that have been incorporated into the bill includes local government's right to deny for the health and safety of residents and the environment. Specifically, we advocated for around oil and gas setbacks and around airports, and those were successfully incorporated into the bill. Additionally, it does address that housing does not automatically get the tax exemption, so that they would have to apply for it instead of the tax exemptions that are typically given to churches or public education facilities. The bill is scheduled for third reading in the House, and it continues to be laid over day after day. So we'll continue to monitor and provide updates, but we do anticipate that it will move through the process. Next one is 1272, Construction Defects and Middle Market Housing. Council is in a support position on this bill, and it has its first hearing on March 18th in the House Transportation, Housing, and Local Government Committee. I do want to mention at that same hearing, they will be hearing 1261, which is the Consumer Construction Defect Action Bill. So the other consumer-friendly bill, they'll go to the committee on the same day, so we'll see what the outcome is. And we will be reaching out to council for a volunteer to testify if anybody is interested. The last one is House Bill 1096, which is Automated Permits for Clean Energy Technology. Council is in an opposed position. The bill was successfully pulled from the Finance Committee's schedule by Chair Lindstedt last week. We had a meeting with the sponsors, proponents, and opponents today at 4:00 with hopes that the bill would be pulled, and they would do interim work instead in stakeholdering. Unfortunately, we just got a text that said it is scheduled again for this Thursday in the Finance Committee. So we will also be reaching out to see if there's anybody interested in testifying on behalf of that one as well. Next slide. All right, which brings us to the last bill for tonight. So Senate Bill 161 Transit Reform. As I mentioned earlier, council is not in a position currently, but staff is recommending consideration of a position this evening. So Senate Bill 25161 was introduced, actually, the night we gave the February update. Staff has been involved in reviewing the draft bill prior to introduction, and we reviewed the bill that is currently being circulated. This bill is cosponsored by Senator Winter and Representative Lindstedt, and it creates new requirements for the Regional Transportation District, or RTD, with the goal of improving its performance largely around ridership. These required requirements include strategic planning, performance tracking, continuing the Accountability Committee, and then coordination between transit agencies and local governments. As you can see on the slide, CCI and MMC are in a monitor position, and Dr. Cog is in an amend. Right now, the impact to CCOB is to be determined, and I'm going to talk about that on the next slide. The bill is currently parked in appropriations, and we don't anticipate it being scheduled until the long bill is introduced. As a reminder, a version of this bill was introduced in 2024, but it failed to pass. Next slide. So as I just mentioned, the impact of the bill to CCOB is still to be determined, which is why we're recommending an amend position this evening for council's consideration. The goal of the bill is consistent with past direction from council to increase transportation options in Broomfield, specific to RTD, as well as advocate for services as our taxpayers contribute over $20 million to RTD. As currently written, the bill sets to increase RTD ridership, but staff is concerned that the current language does not have enough specificity to ensure that the ridership is increased across the entire district, more specifically ridership in Broomfield, and not further disparities in service, and instead that it would be concentrated in highly populated areas such as maybe Denver, Aurora, or Boulder. If council is supportive of the staff recommendation and desires to move into an amend position this evening so that we can advocate on behalf of RTD services in Broomfield, a motion second and two-thirds majority is required. If council does not want to take a position, no action is needed. Next slide. And I think that concludes the staff report.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much. We will now proceed with public comments, starting with in-person for this agenda item. Sir, anyone would like to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record. You have three minutes. All right, seeing none, anybody online? Nobody online. Questions and comments from council are next. Are there any questions or comments? I have two from Washington DC. Mayor Castriata, you're up first.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem. So the Metro Mayor's Caucus is also in full support of HB 251272, Construction Defects and Middle Market Housing. I've been asked to testify on behalf of them, and obviously, the city and county of Broomfield, in support. However, that is a Tuesday, and it's scheduled upon adjournment of the Transportation, Housing, Local Government Committee. So we might need to do some coordination around that, because I really do want to testify in support in this bill. It is a major priority for the Metro Mayor's Caucus as well. So we can talk about that later, but I'm, I'm signed up.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just have, I guess, a question for staff as it relates to SB 25161, the Transit Reform Bill. I know staff has identified concerns that the language in this bill, specifically around the 83, yeah, 83% increase in transit service by 2035 could be concentrating in more populous and densely populated areas. The language that precedes that, though, kind of proceeds and proceeds that statement, though, around the greenhouse gas reduction targets that the state has set forth in other parts of Colorado revised statutes, 257102 and 431138. How would, I guess maybe it's not a question, I'll just make a statement. If RTD is to help the state make its reform climate goals, specifically in terms of traffic reduction or vehicle miles, travel reduction, et cetera, they're going to have to target the suburbs. And so I'm wondering how staff rectifies kind of that statement by the state with the greenhouse gas targets and this statement in the bill.
Councilmember Ward, thank you for the question. If I am understanding correctly, again, the bill is, so it, it wants to increase ridership by 83%, and it's to move us further around our GHG reduction goals that have been identified by Governor Polis in his plan, and knowing that vehicle emissions is one of the largest contributor to GHG in the state. So in regards to looking at suburban areas, the suggestion from staff was, in the Accountability Report, to look at county dashboards so that we can see if there is a disparity of services across the districts, and where maybe services could be increased to, to align with the GHG goals, as well as the increase of ridership that the bill, the bill sets out to achieve.
Okay, I, I get that. I guess I'm just trying to rectify in my own mind why this language in this particular bill is not enough to overcome the fear that RTD is going to concentrate service in more populated, more densely populated areas, when most of those areas, like, let's take East Colfax, for example, or Broadway, already have pretty frequent service. I mean, the 15 along East Colfax runs pretty much 15 minutes a day, all day, for the most part. Sure, you could add some more service, but it's not going to have the same benefits adding more service on other areas like the western suburbs on Route 72, for example. So I'm just trying, I'm trying to rectify that in my own mind.
And Councilmember Ward, if I may add, and Sarah Grant's not here, so we can take back questions as well, as she's definitely the technical expert. But I do know that even in the suburb areas, there are still concerns, because districts cross. Like, for example, we have Longmont, and then us, and Erie in the pass-through. So just wanting to make sure, again, that Broomfield, you know, the additional services in Longmont are added, and Broomfield's just a pass-through community again. So I think that's still the concern in the suburban areas, just as much in the highly densely populated areas as well. And just going off of the reductions that we had out of COVID in Broomfield services, we have seen services be brought back, as well as new services been added. And unfortunately, we haven't been able to get the services we did have in Broomfield added back. So again, just trying to protect that and going off of where we are currently in, you know, the optimization plan and what we predict is kind of happening in the future.
Okay. I guess, I, I'm fine with this amend position, because there are other amendments that I have actually chatted with Senator Winter and Representative Lindstat about specifically as their targets for the EcoPass program. It only targets new developments. They're not making any effort to do outreach to existing developments for housing or for business areas. Interlaken would be a great example of that. And then also, some of the housing language that's placed in this bill, I think, I mean, it's great that they're identifying that, but I think RTD has a lot of valuable land, specifically their underutilized parking lots at their park rides and stations that I think would greatly benefit from being redeveloped into mixed-use commercial residential areas, and I don't think that this bill quite meets the mark on that. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you so much for the presentation, Ms. Brilard. You're halfway there, 57 days until May 7th, so I appreciate it. My really question, you know, and I appreciate the update. I guess, based on your, you know, being at the Capitol analyzing the bills and the huge deficit, you know, again, that $1 billion number, and, you know, knowing our own local elected official William, State Representative Lindstedt, being Chair of the Finance Committee, will we see more bills being, I guess, killed this year just because of the budgetary, you know, concerns? And I know the bills you presented, you know, I appreciate you, the presentation, but I, I, overall, like, what's the current vibe, let's just say?
Really hard question. Thank you, Councilmember Lynn. I think it's to be determined. So the ones that are all parked in appropriations, once that long bill comes, and we know what the revenue forecasts are next Monday, I think that's when the rubber is going to finally meet the mat, and those hard decisions and conversations are going to have to start happening. I don't think we've seen a lot of differences in action up to today, but with the long bill quickly approaching and those bills stalled, that's where we'll start to see the impact. What it will be, I'm not sure.
I was hoping you'd, sorry.
That's all right. Additionally, I know that there's a lot of angst and anxiety around what's happening at the federal level. The deepest, most swift impact to the state of Colorado and Broomfield is going to be the 1.2, probably $1.4 billion budget. That will, and, and it's not just a deficit. It's a structural deficit, which means it took a long time to get here. It's going to take a long time to fix this, isn't a one-year. So the word is that on the second half, post the 17th, which they do it on St. Patty's Day, so you can have some libations afterwards to ease the pain of what's going to be occurring, it will be unlike anything we've ever seen before. And so the, the impact, particularly to, to the county side, will, will be deep and reticent and very poignant for our folks in the, that are in the audience today, because we all know that when those larger cuts come, it's post-COVID. So Medicaid and Medicare is expensive. One is federal, and one is state pass-through. It's going to put a very different light on priorities post noon next Monday on the 17th.
Those are my questions. I appreciate it, thanks so much, and thank you so much for going through the interesting process that we're going to have in the next few weeks, especially with the long bill. So appreciate it.
Thank you. So we had a recommendation from staff to take a amend position on Senate Bill 25161. Is there any council member that would like to make a motion, a formal, to make a motion for, to take a formal position on the Senate Bill 25161 Transit Reform?
Can I do it?
Yes, that'd be great.
I don't think I can make a motion, can I? I'm just trying to speed this along. Oh, look, Councilmember Lynn.
Perfect, Councilmember Lynn.
I move that Broomfield takes an amend position on SB 25161.
Perfect, Councilmember Lynn has made a motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Henkel.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right, seeing no discussion. Council, please cast your vote on this motion electronically. And for those online, Councilmember Ward? How do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh Holson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Leslie?
Yes.
And Councilmember Lynn?
Yes.
Thank you. All council members have entered their vote. A two-thirds majority of the entire council, not just those present, is required for council to direct a formal position on a bill. The results will now be displayed on the screen, and that motion passes unanimously. That completes our discussion on legislation. Thank you so much. We will now continue with Reports section of the agenda. City Manager Hoffman, do you have any reports this evening?
Yes, thank you, I have two. One is timely, given each time you've asked tonight about if anyone is online. There hasn't been. During COVID, when we went into a virtual environment, we started virtual town halls, and we also started through CRL, our partners, to be able to allow residents to be at home and to call in, not virtually show up on the screen, of course, but virtually call in. CRL has indicated to us that they are no longer going to provide, they're in a reorg, so they're no longer going to be providing that service. So this service will be discontinued. The other avenues for community participation and comments that we didn't have post-COVID are now in place. That includes the Broomfield Voice. Of course, historically, it was, it's, it's been emails and the comment folders, and also, obviously, showing up. So those avenues will continue, we'll continue to stream on Channel 8, we'll continue to stream on YouTube. But the call-ins, again, generate, turned out to be, and I'm looking at our budget folks in the back, Broomfield is scrubbing our budget. We're going to be coming back to council in the near future when we have kind of done that first deep dive of what it's going to look like, keeping in mind what we just talked about with the, with, with the state deficit coming. So it was timing. We've been talking about doing this, and then CRL indicated their reorg. So. So tonight will be the last night that we're offering the phone call-in. Um, and again, we'll continue to communicate that um, from our social media channels um, on the uh, all of our other websites, as well as our community updates and, and be in the loop as well. The other um, item that I wanted to briefly talk about, we've had a lot of um, I don't wanna say a lot, it's, everything is relative, but we've had feedback this year with our community survey. It was the first year that we've asked the vendor to ensure that if you didn't have a smartphone, particularly those of us, and I'm looking at the mayor particularly on my screen, um, with seniors, and when we're at the senior lunches and we're um, we're out and about um, at Fish and some of the other opportunities. If they don't have access to a smartphone or um, seniors in my family, it's uh, it's difficult enough even for the clicker on the TV. Um, we have one button. So to be expecting them to engage in a community survey um, is a lot. So the vendor indicated that we could also have uh, two ways. Um, and that is by request of those community surveys. Um, anytime that we roll out something new, there's going to be um, challenges with that. We've been back and forth with our vendor pretty consistently. I understand that there have been residents that have requested surveys. Um, even our, our uh, council members have requested surveys. I requested a survey. It's taking anywhere from zero to three days to get those uh, surveys out to the residents. We want to ensure that the, when we say the survey stays open until Friday, the fourteenth, we don't mean that you have to have your survey in by Friday, the fourteenth. We'll send some communication out tomorrow to ensure that if a request is made for that survey, that request is what triggers by the end of day for the deadline on Friday, the fourteenth. So if you've requested a survey, you either haven't gotten it, or you haven't had time to fill it out, but it's before Friday, the fourteenth at five, your survey will be counted in that community survey. So um, we apologize that there has been um, some, some, some difficulty in rollout. Um, it's always the, I never really understood that all deeds go, all good deeds go unpunished. I always thought that was kind of an icky thing to say, but now I get older and I, I understand what that means. Um, so we just want to ensure that all of the folks that want to have an opportunity and be part of the scientific survey have plenty of avenues in order to do that. This one is uh, just a little bit choppy, so we'll uh, we'll try to make it right and get the communication out there. Thank you, Mayor Potem.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, City and County Attorney Rogers, do you have a report this evening?
No, thank you, Mayor Potem.
All right. Uh, we now move on to consent, uh, consent items. Uh, council's consideration of the consent items is next. The clerk will read both the consent items by title, and there will be one opportunity for public comments and council questions and comments. Will the clerk please read Agenda Item six A and six B by title?
Six A, approval of minutes for the regular council meeting of February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Six B, proposed resolution number twenty-two-five-six-one, approving the home-ARP agreement with the city of Boulder and the Broomfield Housing Alliance for the Grove at Cottonwood project.
Thank you. We will now proceed with public comments, starting with in-person. If there is anyone that, that would like to be heard, please come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none. Uh, next is public comment from individuals via phone, and we don't have anybody joining on uh, phone. Does any member of council have any comments on these agenda items? Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you. Um, I did have a question um, just about the Grove and we talked about, um, let's see here, I'm sorry, I need to look at my notes. Um, sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, we were talking about, I was just thinking about the dollars that we're using and how it was um, proposed. It said on there that the city will determine a reasonable limit for overall returns and cash flow distributions to ensure that the sub-recipient and owner does not receive excessive gains or profits from the project as a result of home ARP funds. The city will conduct an analysis, which includes profit that is projected to flow to the developer as operating cash flow from rental projects and any other professional fees being paid to the developer. The city will ensure that any profit or return uh, will not exceed the city's established standards. Are we keeping track of that, or who is keeping track of that?
Thank you, Ms. Tessier.
Thank you. Good uh, evening. Um, thank you for the question and the opportunity to clarify. Uh, so there is no party that is expected to, to have any gains or profits uh, regarding the, the home ARP dollars. Um, you asked quite a number of questions. Um, I got the first one and then I was.
The main one is just, I wanna know, you know, is the, it, it said the city will ensure that any profit or return. So it seems like the onus is on the city. So it seems like we have all these different hands here, and I just wanna make sure that we're keeping track of things. How much is the city gonna help keep track of things with them?
Got it. Yes, so the city and county of Broomfield is responsible for a lot of that um, compliance piece. We are working with Boulder, who is the lead, but because this uh, development is in Broomfield, it is our responsibility as a participating jurisdiction to ensure compliance. And that is through all the different receipts that we get for reimbursement. So we, we check that um, against the compliance, and if they are good to go, then we get reimbursed by Boulder.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then um, it noted that the discussion surrounding the structure involves whether the funding will be given directly to the tax credit partner, Grove at Cottonwood LLP, or directly to Broomfield Housing Alliance, who will then provide the funding to the Grove. Um, at the time of this memo, it said a final decision had not been made on the exact structure of the transaction. Are we expecting some sort of answer on that, or do we have it yet?
Yes, we had a conversation yesterday, or yeah, Monday, and um, it looks like we are going to um, have the partnership in the agreement. It will be between the city and county of Broomfield, um, along with Boulder as the lead and the owner. So it's the Grove L triple-LC, triple-LP. That, um, so it won't be directly to BHA.
Okay. All right, yeah, I was getting really confused as to where's the money going and who's keeping track of it.
Yes, that was, yes, we had many, many conversations and many emails um, to, and, and with, you know, home funds. And these are ARP funds, so American Rescue Plan funds, and this is our first time kinda going through all of the process and, and, and what is needed. So yes, ultimately, City and County of Broomfield will ensure compliance with the help of our friends at BHA.
And this is for sure money, right?
Is anything for sure right now with the federal government? I mean, we're all kind of like having our fingers crossed, we're moving toward that finish line. We um, you know, we've had conversations with some members over at HUD. We still have connections, so we're going to use them and, and hopefully get this across the finish line.
Right. And then one more kind of question, kind of a fun question. Um, I was reading through the memo and it talked about, it sounds like there's even a way to provide some sweat equity. I found that really kind of quirky, and I've never seen that in a memo before. Um, and what would that sweat equity look like if it could be, like, I even thought of, you know, if it's something um, oh, Habitat for Humanity, where we're doing sweat equity, could council come out and help as well? What does that sweat equity maybe look like?
Yes, I love that you're asking that question. Um, this particular project is not, uh, does not have the sweat equity piece. This is just one of those pieces that would count toward hu- uh, home ARP. Um, so the city and county of Broomfield is required to provide a twenty-five percent match to the one point four million dollars that we're getting, and, and um, if you look at the budget item, I think that's like around three hundred and seventy nine dolla- thousand dollars um, in fee waivers and public land dedication uh, waivers. And um, so we've met that match, um, and because there is no organization like um, Habitat for Humanity, who is not doing this sweat equity, uh, this project doesn't have that. However, if things do change, uh, you will be the first one we call.
Jazz hands. Thank you all so much. I support this. Thank you.
All right, are there any other question, council member questions, comments on this, on the consent agenda? All right, seeing uh, no further comments or questions. Is there a motion by council that can, uh, consent item six A and six B be approved? Councilmember Henkel.
No, ma'am.
Is there a second? Councilmember Wynn?
I second this motion.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Uh, in-person council, please cast your vote electronically. And virtual council members, when I say your name, please state your vote verbally. Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Lim?
Yes.
Councilmember Leslie?
Yes.
All council members have entered their votes. The results will now be displayed on the screen, and that passes unanimously. Uh, seeing how it is exactly eight o'clock. Oh, yes, of course. Uh, seeing how it is exactly eight o'clock, we will take our ten-minute break. We will resume uh, the council meeting at ten, or eight-ten.
First under action items this evening is a resolution authorizing and approving the first amendment to the city and county of Brimfield budget for the year 2025. Also, item 7B is the Brimfield Urban Renewal Authority's consideration of a resolution authorizing and approving the first amendment to the Borough Budget for 2025. We will consider both items at this time. Before we move to a vote, because one of the items is the Brimfield Urban Renewal Authority's consideration of proposed Resolution 2025-52 UR, we will convene a meeting at Borough. The meeting in Brimfield Urban Renewal Authority has called to order to consider agenda item 7B. I'll note that all members of the authority are present except for members Law Evans and Goldstein. Council and Borough members have a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And joining us this evening is Nathan Mosley. He is our budget manager. Graham Clark, our Director of Finance. Who's starting, gentlemen? Mr. Clark, are you kicking us off?
Nathan will be starting. This is Nathan Mosley as City Manager Hoffman mentioned. Nathan's been the budget manager for three years. He's been doing a superb job and leading us in the budget category. Of course, there will be a lot more budget to come later this year. But with that, the first amendment, Nathan Mosley.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council members. As they mentioned, I'm Nathan Mosley. I'm the budget manager here for the city and county of Brimfield. This evening, I'll be providing a high-level overview of the recommended changes included in the first budget amendment of 2025. Next slide, please. So budget amendments are a normal part of our annual budget process. Additionally, carryforwards are administrative in nature per Home Rule Charter Section 1212, which states appropriations for capital expenditures continue in effect until the purpose has been accomplished. This is different than our operational budgets, which expire at the end of the fiscal year. The major changes that are recommended in Amendment Number One are related to the carryforward of budgets for projects and grants that City Council has previously approved but went unspent in 2024. One of the main factors that contribute to the need to carry forward funds is related to projects that are fully budgeted in year one and are planned to occur over multiple years. This current amendment carries forward the unused portion of those budgets so they can be utilized in 2025 for these ongoing projects. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. There we go. The presentation tonight is meant to provide an overview of staff's recommendations for Amendment Number One. All of the detailed information regarding the amendment is included in the council memo. As you can see on the screen, Amendment One impacts several of the funds that we have here for the city and county of Brimfield. And so I'll go through each of those in subsequent slides. Next slide, please. The first amendment also includes several new items. This slide highlights some of the more significant new items. So we have various grants that we get as an organization. And due to timing, those were not included in the original budget that was adopted back in October, and those need to be added into the budget. We also have $400,000 for a Brimfield Housing Authority support, and that was per Resolution 2024-162 that was approved back in December. As part of the approval back in October, council gave direction to staff to develop a program to provide utility rate assistance to residents. We have included expenses associated with that program in this amendment as well, and I'll go into more detail on the URFA, URAF program in a later slide. This amendment also includes $8.4 million for the acquisition of the Miller property. The majority of that purchase price is going to be covered with public land dedication fees that have been collected and reserved specifically for this purpose. We've also included two positions to support the implementation of the residential waste program. When I want to point these out, they're included both on the general governmental side and down on the enterprise fund side, both in the information you have in the packet and here on the slide. But when we were setting these positions up, we utilize financial coding for similar position which supports the enterprise funds. And this is incorrect. We're going to amend the budget in October to reflect the corrected financial coding, and I just want to reiterate that there's no expenses for residential waste that's going to hit our enterprise funds. So I just wanted to be clear on that one change that we need to make. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, the largest component of this amendment is related to carryforward of unspent but already approved budgets for multi-year capital projects. We're recommending to carryforward approximately $64 million, which represents approximately 175 ongoing projects. So a couple of those projects include 112 and Uptown roadway improvements. We also have the Bay renovation phase four. Luckily, that project is currently on schedule and expected to open in the beginning of July. And we also will be rolling forward funds for Brimfield Heights pedestrian and stormwater improvements. This project was funded with ARPA funds. This is our final ARPA project, otherwise known as American Rescue Plan Act, for those who don't know the acronym. But Brimfield Heights is also on track to expend all of those ARPA funds by the end of 2026, which is in line with federal grant requirements around ARPA dollars. A full list of the projects being cared for is included in your council memo. Next slide, please. This slide highlights the recommended adjustments to the enterprise funds. The amounts listed here represent approximately 50 ongoing pre-approved capital projects. The only new funding included in this amendment is related to the implementation of the URAF program, which totals $2.1 million. That amount includes both unrealized revenues and actual expenditures for the program. On the slide, those are being highlighted. So the unrealized revenue projection of about $1.5 million, these will be in the form of credits to residents on their bills. So it's not an actual expense, but we wanted to be able to categorize that and show that to council and the community. The next line is about $500,000 in expected expenses for assistance rebates. These will be actual checks that are cut to residents, and these are for folks that live in residences that have master meters. So this would be people that live in apartment complexes. And then the final line, about $128,000 will support the administration of the program, and that's for two limited-term employees. Next slide, please. This slide is focused on BUREA. This slide shows all of the adjustments to the 2025 BUREA budget here in Amendment Number One. And as we mentioned before, the BUREA budget will be considered as a separate resolution tonight. Next slide, please. Finally, I want to cover some next steps related to the overall budget process. For our enterprise funds, we're going to be coming forward for our first quarterly update to City Council and the community on April 15. At that time, we expect to have information about how 2024 ended up financially, and then also some preliminary information related to the development of the enterprise budgets and how those relate to fees. Then we have our 2025 budget amendments. So as an organization, we continue to focus on realignment of our current resources rather than bringing additional budget amendments forward to City Council. This worked really well in 2024, so we're planning to continue this process here in '25 and into the future. So budget, the budget team and departments will be monitoring our revenues and expenditures throughout the year. And if needed, we will bring a, we'll submit a budget amendment that will come in October in conjunction with the 2026 budget adoption. If we bring that forward, that amendment would focus on items that can't be funded with current appropriations. And again, it would focus on things that are mandates or obligations or things that are critical functions to the organization. And then finally, in December, usually the first week of December, we'll bring forward a grant-focused amendment. So any grants that we get throughout the year, we'll have those appropriated in December. Finally, regarding the development of the 2026 budget, we will, we've hosted several kickoff meetings here in the organization. We've also hosted several CIP coordination meetings, and we host office hours as a budget team to assist our departments prepare their budget submittals. Currently, we're scheduled to meet with City Council on May 8 for a study session for preliminary discussions around the '25 revised and '26 budget. We'll also be meeting with City Council on August 19. At that time, we'll provide a mid-year fiscal update in conjunction with City Economist Jeff Romine. And at that time, we'll discuss some preliminary budget highlights and solicit feedback from City Council regarding the final '26 budget development. And then finally, budget adoption is currently scheduled for October 28. Next slide, please. So with that, that's my presentation, and at this time, we're available to answer any questions that council might have. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for your presentation. Before we get to council, we will proceed with public comments on both of these items, starting within person. If there is anyone who would like to be heard, please come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood, and you have three minutes to speak. Seeing nobody, is there anybody online? Nobody online. Questions from City Council and Borough members are next. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion. The time to introduce amendments and state positions for or against this item is later. Are there any questions? Councilmember James Marsh Holschen.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a few questions I had on the limited, the LTAs for the trash. I appreciate your comments about the issue with the E.V. Ulysses' coding. My question actually is, I see in the budget tables that you provided the employees, but I don't see the expected revenue from the opt-out fee. Is that something I'm missing, or is that something that will come later?
That would be something that will come later. Based on timing of preparing the amendment, we didn't have those projections yet. So that would be something we would make revenue adjustments and other things like that in the October amendment.
Gotcha. And then I'm assuming that also is true for the reduction in the cost of the spring cleanup and the savings that we're going to see from the not going forward with ranked choice voting this year?
Correct. That's kind of the concept of the reallocation. So rather than, as priorities change, you think about how far in advance we have to do the budgets for the next year. Priorities change and costs change, and so we, rather than bringing increases to you all, we work to try to work within the appropriations given. So yes, if there's something like the spring cleanup that we can reduce costs, means times we'll reappropriate, or not reappropriate, but redirect those to other priorities that we have at the time without having to bring forward a net increase to the overall budget.
Got it. Thank you. And then question on the $2 million for the E.V. Ulysses' contract. Is that the money that we are getting from the state and then providing to Ulysses, or is that a different expense?
That $2 million, let me double-check, but I believe it's just the money from the Housing Development Fund. The $2 million from the state is something else. Due to timing, it's not included in this amendment as well. So that's basically the $2 million from the Council approved at the end of last year.
Gotcha. That's what I was thinking. Is the one from the state, will that be shown on a later amendment as a pass-through also?
Yeah, we'll have to see how that's going to be recognized. But yeah, most likely, it would come in as a grant revenue, and then it would be an expenditure out.
Gotcha. All right. And then I had one other question on the how's the, or the water reimbursement, but you already answered that. So that was all I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Marsh Holschen. Any other council members looking for hands on line? I'll ask a question just in case we do have some more. So one of the, one of the things that you talked about was the enterprise fund, specifically the utility rate assistance fund. And you talked about kind of that anticipated expenses that were going to be associated with that. Do we anticipate that those could be more or less than that, or do we figure that that's a pretty good number based upon the information that we know?
Again, those were developed fairly recently. I think we're coming back on April 15 for the update on the enterprise funds. So by that time, we'll have more data to see the utilization that we're seeing. We've only had that open for a couple of weeks, so we really don't have enough data to say one way or the other, but I still think that those are good estimates.
Okay. Yeah, and I mean, just, just looking at, I think it was a $1.5 million figure. I'm just wondering, you know, are we going to go up, you know, by another half million, down a half million? So I'm just kind of, so I'll wait until the next update to get that information.
Yeah, again, we have so little data to infer anything from at this point. So our plan is to provide an update to council and the community at the April 15 and have more data at that time.
That sounds great. So you also had talked a lot about the realignment of current revenue and expenditures. Can you talk more about the process for the current 2025 budget, as well as how we are kind of looking at, you know, that changing that process maybe a little bit, maybe City and County Manager Hoffman, maybe you can talk a little bit more about this. How is that looking as we go into that 2026 budget process?
Very similar to the, thank you, Mayor Protem. Similar to the conversations that we've been having over the last year, amplified, of course, with the state budget deficit and what that looks like, not just in 2025, from an adjustment perspective, but 2026, 2027, and 2028. So we look at three to five years. We don't look at that immediate year. But we are, our message to staff as we roll out the 2026 budget is it looks different this year in that not only are we emphasizing critical obligation and mandates, but we're scrubbing what existing funds look like. So we're looking at in-state travel, out-of-state travel, food, meetings, a whole host of items, doing that deeper dive to be able to say not only reallocating within your existing budget and allocation, but what does that look like to be able to have a sense of not pre-planning necessarily, but we know revenues are flat and we know expenses are going up. So what are those mechanisms that we can control internally? That's what we're looking at.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Any other council member comments, questions? On this? None. All right. So let's see. First is council's consideration of proposed Resolution Number 2025-44. Will the clerk please read the proposed Resolution by title?
Resolution Number
The next line is about $500,000 in expected expenses for assistance rebates. These will be actual checks that are cut to residents. And these are for folks that live in residences that have master meters. So this would be people that live in apartment complexes. And then the final line, about $128,000 will support the administration of the program. And that's for two limited term employees. Next slide, please. This slide is focused on BUREA. This slide shows all of the adjustments to the 2025 BUREA budget here in amendment number one. And as we mentioned before, the BUREA budget will be considered as a separate resolution tonight. Next slide, please. Finally, I want to cover some next steps related to the overall budget process. For our enterprise funds, we're going to be coming forward for our first quarterly update to city council and the community on April 15th. At that time, we expect to have information about how 2024 ended up financially. And then also some preliminary information related to the development of the enterprise budgets and how those relate to fees. Then we have our 2025 budget amendments. So as an organization, we continue to focus on realignment of our current resources rather than bringing additional budget amendments forward to city council. This worked really well in 2024, so we're planning to continue this process here in '25 and into the future. So budget, the budget team and departments will be monitoring our revenues and expenditures throughout the year. And if needed, we will bring a, we'll submit a budget amendment that will come in October in conjunction with the 2026 budget adoption. If we bring that forward, that amendment would focus on items that can't be funded with current appropriations. And again, it would focus on things that are mandates or obligations or things that are critical functions to the organization. And then finally, in December, usually the first week of December, we'll bring forward a grant focused amendment. So any grants that we get throughout the year will have those appropriated in December. Finally, regarding the development of the 2026 budget, we will, we've hosted several kickoff meetings here in the organization. We've also hosted several CIP coordination meetings and we host office hours as a budget team to assist our departments prepare their budget submittals. Currently, we're scheduled to meet with city council on May 8th for a study session for preliminary discussions around the '25 revised and '26 budget. We'll also be meeting with city council on August 19th. At that time, we'll provide a mid-year fiscal update in conjunction with city economist Jeff Romine. And at that time, we'll discuss some preliminary budget highlights and solicit feedback from city council regarding the final '26 budget development. And then finally, budget adoption is currently scheduled for October 28th. Next slide, please. So with that, that's my presentation. And at this time, we're available to answer any questions that council might have. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for your presentation. Before we get to council, we will proceed with public comments on both of these items, starting within person. If there is anyone who would like to be heard, please come to the podium and state your name and neighborhood. You have three minutes to speak. Seeing nobody, is there anybody online? Nobody online. Questions from city council and borough members are next. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion. The time to introduce amendments and state positions for or against this item is later. Are there any questions? Councilmember James Marsh Holsen.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a few questions I had on the limited, the LTA is the for the trash. I appreciate your, your comments about the, the issue with the enterprise coding. My question actually is, I see in the budget tables that you provided the employees, but I don't see the expected revenue from the opt out fee. Is that something I'm missing or is that something that will come later?
That would be something that will come later. Based on timing of preparing the amendment, we didn't have those projections yet. So that would be something we would make revenue adjustments and other things like that in the October amendment.
Gotcha. And then I'm assuming that also is true for the reduction in the cost of the spring cleanup and the savings that we're going to see from the not going forward with ranked choice voting this year?
Correct. That's kind of the concept of the reallocation. So rather than as priorities change, you think about how far in advance we have to do the budgets for the next year. Priorities change and costs change. And so we, rather than bringing increases to you all, we work to try to work within the appropriations given. So yes, if there's something like the spring cleanup that we can reduce costs, means times we'll reappropriate or not reappropriate, but redirect those to other priorities that we have at the time without having to bring forward a net increase to the overall budget.
Got it. Thank you. And then question on the $2 million for the E.V. Ulysses contract. Is that the money that we are getting from the state and then providing to Ulysses? Or is that a different expense?
That $2 million, let me double check, but I believe it's just the money from the housing development fund. The $2 million from the state is something else. Due to timing, it's not included in this amendment as well. So that's basically the $2 million from the council approved at the end of last year.
Gotcha. That, that's what I was thinking. Is the, is the, is the one from the state, will that be shown on a later amendment as a pass through also?
Yeah, we'll have to see how that's going to be recognized. But yeah, most likely it would come in as a grant revenue and then it would be an expenditure out.
Gotcha. All right. And then I had one other question on the housing or the water reimbursement, but you already answered that. So that was all I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Marsh Holsen. Any other council members looking for hands on line? I'll ask a question just in case we do have some more. So one of the, one of the things that you talked about was the enterprise fund, specifically the utility rate assistance fund. And you talked about kind of that anticipated expenses that were going to be associated with that. Do we anticipate that those could be more or less than that? Or do we figure that that's a pretty good number based upon the information that we know?
Again, those were developed fairly recently. I think we're coming back on April 15th for the update on the enterprise funds. So by that time, we'll have more data to see the utilization that we're seeing. We've only had that open for a couple of weeks, so we really don't have enough data to say one way or the other, but I still think that those are good estimates.
Okay. Yeah, and I, and I mean, just, just looking at, I think it was a $1.5 million figure. I'm just wondering, you know, are we going to go up, you know, by another half million, down a half? So I'm just kind of, so I'll wait until the next update to get that information.
Yeah, again, we have so little data to infer anything from at this point. So our plan is to provide an update to council and the community at the April 15th and have more data at that time.
That sounds great. So you also had talked a lot about the realignment of current revenue and expenditures. Can you talk more about the process for the current 2025 budget? As well as how we are kind of looking at, you know, that changing that process maybe a little bit, maybe city and county manager Hoffman, maybe you can talk a little bit more about this. How is that looking as we go into that 2026 budget process?
Very similar to the, thank you, Mayor Protem. Similar to the conversations that we've been having over the last year, amplified, of course, with the state budget deficit and, and what that looks like, not just in 2025 from an adjustment perspective, but 2026, 2027 and 2028. So we look at three to five years. We don't look at that immediate year. But we are, our message to staff as we roll out the 2026 budget is it looks different this year in that not only are we emphasizing critical obligation and mandates, but we're scrubbing what existing funds look like. So we're looking at in-state travel, out-of-state travel, food, meetings, a whole host of items doing that deeper dive to be able to say not only reallocating within your existing budget and allocation, but what does that look like to be able to have a sense of not pre-planning necessarily, but we know revenues are flat and we know expenses are going up. So what are those mechanisms that we can control internally? That's what we're looking at.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Any other council member comments, questions? On this? None. All right, so let's see. First is council's consideration of proposed resolution number 2025-44. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Resolution number 2025-44 authorizing and approving the first amendment to the city and county of Brimfield budget for the year 2025.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Councilmember Anderson.
So moved.
Is there a second? Councilmember Wynn?
I make this motion.
Is there, just a second though, is what we need. No problem.
I second this motion.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. We'll do. So we just had some technical difficulties. So we're going to do a roll call vote for everyone regardless of in-person or virtual, which isn't, isn't too big of a deal because we have half the council members here and half online. So is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none. In-person council members first. Councilmember Cohen.
Aye.
Councilmember Henkel.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado.
Yes.
Councilmember Wynn.
Yes.
And I am a yes. Then virtual members, councilmember Marsh Holsen.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Lim.
Yes.
Councilmember Leslie.
Yes.
All councilmembers have entered their votes and the results 10-0. They won't be displayed on the screen, but they are, that passes unanimously. Nexus Borough's consideration of item 7B. Will the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Resolution number 2024-52, you are authorizing and approving the first amendment to the Brimfield Urban Renewal Authority budget for the year 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Councilmember Wynn.
I make this motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Henkel.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none. We will cast our votes, starting within person. We'll go from the left side this time. Councilmember Wynn.
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Henkel.
Yes.
And councilmember Cohen.
Yes.
And going online, councilmember Marsh Holsen.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Lim.
Yes.
Councilmember Leslie.
Yes.
And hello, mayor. All member, all borough members have entered their vote. The results will not be displayed on the screen, but that passed further business before the Brimfield Urban Renewal Authority. The meeting is adjourned. Next under agenda items this evening is council's consideration of a resolution related to an agreement for the Brimfield Police Building Project. And thank you to our finance team for your presentation and all your work. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Thank you. Mayor Protem and Katie Allen, our director of community development. And Chief Hempelmann is still here as well. I think we're all in agreement with the, the need for the new building has been established. Katie is going to walk us through where we are and what the next steps are, Ms. Allen.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. So Katie Allen, Director of Community Development. So this agenda item is requesting approval of the architectural and engineering design for the building with Anderson Mason Dale Architects through the completion of construction documents. Next slide, please. So we were here in November. We presented sort of the building current conditions as well as the conceptual layout. I have some of the same slides. I'm going to just touch on it briefly. I'm not going to go into the full depth. I know you've already had kind of a long evening. So this slide just shows some photos of the current condition. Clearly, they are out of space, as you have heard. So storage areas with multiple purposes stacked all the way to the ceiling, high density workstations, reconfiguration of closets and storage spaces into offices and probably more importantly, relocation of certain divisions into other city and county buildings. Next slide. To quantify it, so our current building is 35,424 square feet. If the current police department with the current number of staff were in a modern accredited code compliant building, that facility should be 70 to 75,000 square feet. Planning for growth 20 to 25 years, the recommendation is a building somewhere between 82 and 87,000 square feet. Next slide. So stepping back, we did a formal request for proposals for design services last year. We sent RFP specifically to public safety design teams. We got four proposals. All were interviewed. And Anderson Mason Dale was selected based on the firm qualifications, experience, their team's qualification and experience, as well as their approach to the project. Their first phase, which was site selection and conceptual layout, was completed in August and that was presented to council in November. Next slide. So we, we gave them a pretty tight perimeter in which to site the building. It was bound by Third Avenue into Combs Drive. And their challenge was to find some available space that would allow for adequate parking and to avoid utilities and critical, other critical infrastructure. Next slide. So really that left kind of three main areas to look at within that site. Yeah, the northwest, southwest and southeast areas shaded in blue. And they, as I said in the previous slide, they, they had to look at parking and utilities and things like that. Next slide. You know, the police buildings are special. And they differ from other public buildings in several ways. First and foremost, police buildings are, they must be designed to higher structural standards by code. The building has to function 24 hours a day, which means the energy systems have to be efficient and easy to maintain. Electrical systems need to be on generators. Finishes have to be durable enough to withstand 24-hour day wear. They need to be designed to properly process store and investigate, and investigate property and evidence, including the safe handling of and storage of narcotics. The 911 call center needs to meet specific standards, which results in redundant mechanical, electrical and fire safety systems. We need secure parking for patrol fleet, support vehicles and staff. It requires fitness and wellness areas and very specific public and secure areas. Next slide. So with that, as you recall, the, the best site for the building is in the northwest corner of our circle, which is the southeast corner of DeCombs Drive and Third Avenue, right where the solar panels are, if you're familiar with that. Some of the key features of the site are, are listed with a number and are shown on the side. So number one would be the public parking area and the main building entrance. Number two is the vehicle secured gates. There's two of them. Number three would be a new drive entrance off of DeCombs Drive. Four would be an exit from the vehicle bay onto a Third Avenue. Five would be solar PV can, canopies over the secured parking of fleet vehicles. And six would be where the screen mechanical systems would be on the building. Next slide. So parking was a very, one of the main drivers in finding the spot. Right now, parking is at 100% utilization. This plan maxes the secure parking available in the site. We do expect this will be at 100% utilization in the future as well. It will be adding 106 secure spaces and nine public spaces. Next slide. So this is just sort of a 3D perspective of the building massing, not the architecture. You can see the solar, proposed solar canopy for the parking shown. This project will be designed to reduce energy consumption, energy costs and greenhouse gas emissions by following the new Colorado low energy and low carbon code. Strategies like electrification, enhanced building envelope efficiency design and renewable energy systems as shown will be explored and implemented. Next slide. So in terms of costs, we looked at several new public safety buildings in Colorado and adjusted those costs to fourth quarter $20, $25. Average construction cost is $856 a square foot. Next slide. At this really conceptual level, ours is right in there. Estimate is right around $852 a square foot. For a total in $20, $26 of 73 and a half million. Next slide. So this resolution is to approve the full design documents for the building with Anderson Mason Dale through construction documents. The total cost is $4,688,600. We do anticipate a second amendment to the design agreement after construction documents. So that would be bidding assistance, support all the way through construction, furniture design and project closeout support. And that says in 2026, but that would really be end of 2027. But that second amendment is estimated to be approximately 1.9 million. Our total design services cost is estimated to be about 9.4% of the construction costs. Industry standard is 10%, so we're right in there. Next slide. So schedule, if this is approved, we're looking at about 12 to 14 months of design and permitting. Construction is estimated about 18 months, 17 to 18 months. So we are at the end of 2027. And with that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions and Chief Hempelmann is here as well. Sorry, there's one more slide. Yeah. The, excuse me. We'll come back to council when we get to the phase called schematic design, which will have the design pretty well solidified, not the details for construction. And that's when we'll have a lot more information for council. Also about the same time, that's when we try to bring a contractor on board through what we call the construction manager general contractor process. When we bring them in that stage, they can really go through the documents, price things, look for constructability issues, provide alternatives that can bring costs down, which is the goal always. So if that pre-construction agreement exceeds 200,000, council will see that agreement. My guess is it might be below that. It'll be somewhere in there, though. And then a general obligation bond is anticipated for early 2026. The contractor would then put together what's called a guaranteed maximum price agreement for construction. And that would be mid 2026. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for your presentation. We will now proceed with general public comments. Sorry, we will now proceed with public comments for this agenda item, starting within person. Is there anybody that would like to provide comments for this agenda item? Seeing none. Next is public comments from individuals joining via phone. And we don't have anybody on the phone. So questions from council are next. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion. It's time to introduce amendments and state positions for or against this item is later. Are there any questions? Councilmember Henkel.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to try to make this as quick as possible. I have a few questions on here, just to clarify. But I did notice on one of the slides, we talked about North Glenn Westminster Lone Tree, all say justice center. But we're not necessarily including the courts in ours. Are those including the courts and ours aren't? Are we talking with the courts? How is that working with the police and also courts? Because I am assuming that we're going to have to expand our courts.
Our court building, when we were here in November, we committed to submitting a CIP request to start, since it would lag, right? We would start ideally design in 2026. And then construction could start when the police move out at the end of 2027. So that's not part of this cost. And I believe those buildings, you know, they're called justice centers are police buildings. Just confirm.
They are.
They are police buildings. Okay. Just as feedback, I would love to see, you know, what kind of communication that we're having in the future as far as courts and, and police go and what that looks like for you all, just to have that communication going, just give some feedback. And then the second part is that I did notice that on the project, it said it includes structural and electrical design of freestanding parking canopies with photovoltaic panels. The project includes the design of infrastructure to support charging stations of electric vehicles throughout the secure parking area. However, they did say that the project will not pursue lead certification. So was that sort of a cost benefit analysis? Or what does that look like as far as our GHG emission goals?
Well, that was partly from experience. We have, we did pursue lead certification with the jail expansion. And it didn't change the energy efficiency of the building typically. It's, well, I can't, I don't want to say typically. It's often done for marketing reasons. It, there's a cost add to, to have that plaque. It's a point based system, so you can achieve it points. Sometimes you start chasing points and they're not the most practical for the facility. And, and it does add a significant cost. So I think like some agencies, Boulder Valley School District for one, the, the way to save cost and energy is to pursue the energy efficient things, energy efficiency design, but not necessarily go after the certification.
Gotcha. We're not going for the birthday party present necessarily, the birthday party we can go after.
Sounds good.
And then the last question that I have is about the fire protection design. It says it'll be through performance specifications and fire protection drawings indicating specific hazard areas. We do not feel full scope fire protection design is warranted or appropriate. So where, where, what was the thought going into that or do we know?
I would have to defer to the air safety design team for that specific question that we could get back to.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Wynn.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you for, for the presentation, Ms. Allen. I really appreciate you going into depth. I, I guess from earlier, I had spoken maybe a bit too early about the transition phase between the capacity with the police department. And I guess this might question might be towards the chief actually. But long story short, will the impact of the new building have any detriment or any effects with the, you know, the men and women who are in law, the law enforcement department? Just because it is a transitionary phase, so to speak.
Just to clarify, you're asking during the transition phase?
Yeah.
Well, I think Katie, you could probably confirm this, but I think we're able to remain where we're at while the new building is being built. Is that correct?
Cool. That's all my questions then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And councilmember Lim.
Thank you. With the design geared towards the low energy and low carbon code, that's a good thing. My understanding of what's coming in that is that there would be alternatives within that code of how to meet certain thresholds. So will, will AMD design be given specifications to provide alternatives as to how the low energy and low carbon code can be met?
Thank you for the question, councilmember Lim. Yeah, my understanding is, is that code you also have to meet a point system to, to establish the energy conservation and it can be done in, in different ways. So the mechanical engineer working for AMD and the electrical engineers will be looking at alternatives early in the design to figure out the most efficient and resilient and redundant systems to meet that code and how to do that. So we won't be telling them which parts need to be electric or that, that's for them to tell us and advise to achieve those goals. Because they're the experts.
Okay, is there? Will, will they be coming back with just one recommendation as to those mechanical systems? And say, you know, this is how, this is, this meets it and this is the cost? Or if there are alternatives within a certain range of costs, will we see the alternatives come back to us? That's my question.
I would assume so, yes. I mean, I believe the code is heavily favors electrification. So I'll have to learn as I go about which systems can or cannot meet that and what the alternatives are and those costs. Certainly, we will share all that with you.
So
Okay.
Councilmember Lim, just to, to make sure that the managing these expectations, is the question about, similar to the conversation that we had with the demolition of the event center, where we said 70% is going to be X cost and this much recyclable, 80%, 90%? I think that's what you're getting to?
Yes, poss, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Is that a possibility that, will we see that?
Right. Katie, so that modifies your answer in that the shopping
in that the shopping isn't going to be a menu for costs that are associated with the higher level of whether it's electric and, and/or solar. So in other words, we're not going to have a high energy efficiency, medium energy efficiency, low energy efficiency with correlating costs for each one. When we come back with that design phase, it's going to be, here's how much it's going to cost. And here are the accoutrements that are going to be built in based on best practice and, and, and availability of what those building designs require.
Okay.
Can I?
Please.
So I don't expect that, I expect that we will be achieving as high of an energy efficiency as possible. If there's an incremental amount that costs a whole bunch more, I'd be surprised and, but that is something we could bring to council. I, I think I, I don't, I don't think it's going to be like the event center where you could spend a whole lot more money to get an incremental amount. I think it's going to be limited by. I mean, I, I, if that's the case, we'll bring it back to council. I just don't anticipate there's going to be a big energy efficiency bump and cost bump. I think we're going to be narrowing in on the most efficient building as possible.
Okay. Okay. That's good to know. I mean, that's, that's kind of what I was envisioning that there was not in meeting, like I said, I've only heard a little bit about this code, the low energy and low carbon code, but I wasn't envisioning there would be a whole lot of variation in, in the way that you would meet a certain point system. But if, I guess I was asking if there were alternatives within a small range, which is of course a relative term, if that would be presented in the design that comes before council.
Yes, we can certainly do that. The only hesitation I have is that might be something we'd want to bring before schematic design because schematic design is there, there'd be a lot of change if we wanted to switch directions at that stage. So it's something I would like to understand sooner and then discuss with the city manager as a way to present it. If, if there's something, a decision that should be made on cost versus efficiency.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Councilmember Marshalshan.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, yeah, kind of going off of what, not kind of going off what, um, Councilmember Lim asked. So just so I understand, we're, we're going to go after the efficiencies that are in the, that are in the updated code. We're not, the, the plan right now is not to pursue like a net zero design, is it? Some, similar to what the, the Northland, their recent construction completed.
I think we're going to try to achieve the highest efficiency we can in the budgeted amount and meet those codes and have a 24 hour day operating building.
Okay. All right. I, I, I view this similar to Councilmember Lim, that I do believe that we should go as high of efficiency as absolutely possible. I do understand the costs, constraints with that, but yeah, I look forward to seeing the design. And I, I, I look forward to this process. I think it's a great, we absolutely need to do this. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other council member questions on this agenda item? Uh, well, I have a couple. Just wanted to ask real quick. So in terms of the, uh, the cost for this, with the bond of about 65 million, what does that look like for our long-term bonding capacity that we have in the future? Is this going to be one big project now? And there won't be much bond capacity down the road? Or are we looking, you know, how does this impact that bonding ability down the road?
I'll have to defer to our finance director.
Thank you for the question, Mayor Protem Chef. We will still have bonding capacity to the exact amount. We have not done that analysis yet. We would do that with our bond council. We are not in any, being that we do not have any larger projects besides this one for the next several years that would be bonded. Uh, we haven't looked at that yet, but uh, we don't anticipate there being any issue with future bonding capacity. We'll be able to, this, this will be about a $5 million annual spend for the debt costs. One which we're able to do, uh, we are situated well right now in terms of debt to revenue. And so we don't anticipate this to have a very big effect on our future bonding capacity, at least in the next five years.
Okay. I appreciate that. Uh, another question, um, that's more specific to the building itself. So the current need about 35,000 or the current status is about 35,000 square feet. The current need is about 70 to 75,000. So you guys are doing a lot with a little bit of space. So thank you for, for doing that. And, uh, you know, hopefully we can continue to grow that building. It looks like that, that the proposed construction would be about 82 to 87,000 or so square feet is what that, I think maybe it was even 87,000 square feet at the end. Just in case we need to grow beyond that, is there the ability to add on to this existing building? So that we aren't in the same place where we're going to have to then find a, a different plot of land to build a police court building?
Well, I'll ask the, I'll answer the first part and Katie could probably expand, but we did take into consideration the growth of 125,000 population when looking at this. And we took every single position and then said, what will that look like with the ratio that we use and how to support staff? Complement those positions or need for those positions. So we did expand it to the 125,000 population.
Okay.
And there's no space, Mayor Protem, left on our campus. So we're squeezing it in for that site location to keep them as close as possible with the, with the courts. So yeah, we're all out of space on our, on our, on our campus.
Okay. Uh, and then the last question is, is the, uh, the, you know, the space for the courts. Uh, so that is the, you know, the, I, I was going to say the elephant in the room, but maybe that's not, uh, it's the real issue that still exists. And so what happens with the existing PD building that, that is there? And, and how does the courts building play with that? And what does that future look of the courts become down the road?
Thank you for the question. Um, so conceptually, because we haven't put any design effort or dollars into it, is that the court would expand at least on the half of that existing building, if not the full existing police building. The plan was developed two years ago was that the court would expand on the second floor of the police building and the first floor of the police building would be used for other city and county functions. I think that needs to be relooked at and that it would be part of the design effort that we would be requesting funding for, um, for the court remodel and expansion.
Okay. And given, I mean, given the timeline, are we looking two to three years out on that court expansion? Or, or what could that timeline be? Could it be sooner?
Well, um, it's the space will be occupied with police officers until the new building is built. So we would try to time it so that construction could begin as soon as the police department moves into the new building, which is estimated for the end of 2027.
But at the same, but at that point, the courts would continue to operate because they're in a separate building.
Correct.
Any other questions? Seeing none? And we are back online, which is a great thing. Thank you, council for your, your patience. Uh, all right. Uh, next is council's consideration of proposed resolution number 20, 2025 dash 55. Would the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Proposed resolution number 2025 dash 55 approving the first amendment to consulting agreement with Anderson Mason Dale Architects PC for the Broomfield Police Building Project.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Councilmember Henkel?
I move that resolution 2025 dash 55 be adopted.
Is there a second?
I second this motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Any online? Any discussion online? Hearing none. Uh, in-person council, please cast your vote electronically this time. And virtual council members, when I say your name, please state your vote verbally. Councilmember Marshalshan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Lim?
Yes.
Councilmember Leslie?
Yes.
All council members have entered their vote. The results will now be displayed on the screen and that passes unanimously. Uh, next under action items this evening is council's consideration of a resolution related to the reappointment of the presiding municipal court judge and an amendment to her employment agree, uh, agreement. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
Nikki Macklin is joining us this evening, Director of Human Resources, Ms. Macklin.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council. The Home Rule Charter provides that city council shall appoint and set compensation for the presiding municipal judge, who may serve up to a two-year term at the pleasure of the city council. Judge Bachman is currently serving a two-year term as the presiding municipal judge, which will be subject to renewal or will expire on March 16th, 2025. City council conducted Judge Bachman's annual review on February 11th and the 25th to 2025. As part of Judge Bachman's annual review, city council indicated they would like to enter into a new two-year term of service and to increase her compensation. The proposed resolution 2025 dash 37 and this 2025 amendment to her employment agreement, appointing her for a new two-year term from March 16th, 2025 to March 16th, 2027 and increasing the compensation from 222,997 to 233,847 annually, which includes an already approved $500 a month vehicle allowance for 12 months. The resolution also provides for the payment of the premiums for medical and dental benefits for Judge Bachman and her dependents. If council desires to move forward with the reappointment of Judge Bachman and amend her employment agreement, you would vote to approve resolution 2025 dash 37 this evening. With that, I will turn it over to council for questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, before we get to council, we will proceed with public comments, starting with in-person. If there is anyone who would like to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name and neighborhood for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Roxy Julal-Luckmore. Our judge has been doing a fine job. When they come and do their report, it is a thorough report and they answer any questions that we have. I think this is a worthwhile project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? See no others. Anyone online? Nobody online. Nexus, um, let's see. Sorry. Questions from council are next. Members should limit themselves to questions during this portion. The time to introduce amendments and state positions for or against this items later. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Next is council's consideration of proposed resolution number 2025 dash 37. Would the clerk please read the proposed resolution by title?
Proposed resolution number 2025 dash 37 for reappointment and approving the 2025 amendment to the employment agreement for the presiding municipal judge.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Councilmember Anderson?
So moved.
Is there a second? Councilmember Win?
I second this motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Any discussion online? Nobody online. Uh, in-person council, please cast your vote electronically. Virtual council members, when I say your name, please state your vote verbally. Councilmember Marshalshan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Lim?
Yes.
Councilmember Leslie?
Yes.
All council members have entered their vote. The results will now be displayed on the screen and that passes. Councilmember Henkel? Got it now. Thank you. The results will now be displayed on the screen and that passes unanimously. Thank you so much for your presentation. Uh, there are no requests for future action this evening. Is there any other business to come before council from my council colleagues or staff? Seeing none. Uh, there is no further business. The business meeting is adjourned.